Are we recording?
Yes.
Cable is for us. We're good, Mr. Chairman.
So we're all set?
Yes.
Camera, call the meeting to order at 6 o'clock. This is a hybrid meeting, which means it's in person as well as Zoom. I don't think we have anybody on Zoom at the moment yet, but it is a hybrid meeting. I'm going to have my colleagues on the Board of Selectmen identify themselves.
Good evening.
Selectman Hull and Dr. Z.
Present.
Campuchino is present. If you're watching live on cable TV and you wish to join us by Zoom, I'll give you the meeting ID number, which is 840-8378-4897. And I'll repeat that. Meeting ID number is 840-8378-4897. And the pass code is 677476. 677476. So this meeting is being shown live on cable, and it will be uploaded to YouTube at a later date. Could we all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag, the United States of America, and to a republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
First agenda item is scheduled appointment is Mark Pacico, Town Clerk.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for having me. The first thing I want to talk about is the Dayton Housing Authority. Typically, this election year, the Dayton Housing Authority would have one opening on the annual town election ballot. But now it changes to Mass General Law, specifically Chapter 358 of the Acts of 2020. This year's expiring housing authority position is changing from elected to appointed. So, A New Package is the outline of how it works. Basically, the Dayton Housing Authority, all tenants receive a letter from Robbie De Souza, Executive Director of the Housing Authority, and it gives members 30 days to file a notice of intent for the position. The 30-day period is over, and we have received one applicant, William Fontaine of 300 Lincoln Ave., Apartment B19. Mr. Fontaine's in the audience today. So with that said, we are looking to appoint him for a five-year term. The Board of Selectmen is the appointing authority. It'd be from April 10th, which is the day that a term expires, to April 10th, 2027.
Does the Board have any questions regarding this?
I don't.
If not, entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to appoint William Fontaine to the Dayton Housing Authority for a five-year term.
Second.
Is there a second? Any discussion?
Thank you.
If not, I'll call for a vote. Selectman Hull?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campuchino is an aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you for volunteering for this.
Thank you.
A lot of responsibility, but we appreciate it.
Thank you. All right. My next ask is retiring of our old AccuVote voting equipment. So at the last special town meeting on November 1st, the town approved the purchase of four new DS200 ballot scanners and accessories. We have them in our possession now. We've been trained on them. We're ready to use them. So by law, it is required the Board of Selectmen vote to change the voting equipment type and that I notify the Secretary of the Commonwealth of the change.
Does the Board have any questions? If not, entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we, that the Board of Selectmen discontinue use of AccuVote ballot scanners and adopt DS200 ballot scanners.
Second? Second. Is there any discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote. Selectman Hull?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campuchino is an aye.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. So the last part of this is now how do we dispose of the AccuVotes? So once we're done using them, they take the firmware out, so they can't be used anymore. So I'd like, personally, one, I think the town should keep, just as like a museum piece or just for the future, preserve it. But then the other two, we have limited storage. So I can donate it to LHS and they can recycle it. Generally, when you dispose, you put things up for auction. They can be put up to auction. I don't know what use they'd be, but that's up to you guys. I would like to dispose of at least two of the AccuVotes and save one.
Okay, so I guess I'm not familiar with LHS.
You're right. So LHS was the company. There's only two companies in Massachusetts that service the voting equipment. So LHS serviced the AccuVotes, the only ones. So they could recycle it. We're with a new company now.
Yeah, thank you. Does the Board have any questions?
I did have one.
Yep.
Is, in your opinion, is there some kind of inherent value that we would not dispose of them and instead it might be a better idea to do an auction? And then my other question would be, when do we plan to have one?
Did you say we can auction?
You can. So if you, if-
We can?
You can, yes. I'm not sure what the use would be. They, once the firmware's taken out, you really can't do anything with them. So I'm not really, if they're not sold at auction, I'm assuming they get disposed of, which would have a cost. I'm assuming here, I'm not sure. So I was thinking if they were recycled, that, I know there'd be no cost to the town to dispose of them if we recycle them through LHS.
Any other questions?
I don't have any, no.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I motion, I might be getting the wording wrong, Mr. Town Clerk. I motion that we return the AccuVote ballot scanners to LHS to be recycled.
Is there a second?
I just have a question. Mr. Pacico mentioned he wanted to donate one to the historical.
No, I-
I would just keep it in the possession of the town.
Oh, yeah.
We have a previous ballot machine from, that's very, very old, so it'd be nice to have the progression.
And you have room in Town Hall to store this?
I'll make the room. It's tight in there, I'm not going to lie. It's very tight, but I still would like to hold on to it. It's worth it.
Are the AccuVote ones, man, are the AccuVote ones historic, though? Like, I understand the one-
Not right now.
That we've preserved.
Someday.
Okay.
I think maybe, maybe someday. They're antiques right now.
Yeah.
You know, so I-
I just think-
I'd hate to get rid of all of them, you know?
Do you want to keep one?
I do.
Okay.
Yep. If someone wants to get rid in the future, we can-
I'll amend my motion.
Look into it then.
What was the motion?
It was, it was for both of them, but I'll amend.
No, there's three of them.
There's three.
There's three.
There's three, so it's two that would-
I'll amend it for, to be two AccuVote ballot scanners, to be returned to LHS for recycling.
So is there a second?
I will second.
So when these become antiques and historic, 50 years from now, this will be before us, Michael will be before us again, we can decide what we want to do. Auction them off or whatever.
Yes.
I look forward to that.
Me too. Thank you for your time.
You'll be here, I won't. Is there any further discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote. Selectman Hull?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campuchino is an aye.
Thank you.
So thank you very much. The next agenda item is Tom Pearce, Chairman of the Board of Health, as well as Todd Pillings, Health Agent, presentation on Solid Waste and Recycling Advisory Committee.
Good evening.
Good evening, Board. Good evening, everyone. This evening, I'd like to talk about why the town should consider a Solid Waste and Recycling Advisory Committee. First, I'd like to give you a brief history of where we came from and where I, where the DEP wants to go versus where we may go, depending. The only dump I remember was the Hot Street Dump. That was off of Hot Street and Pleasant Street, depending on, was there another one?
Yes, across from Dayton Rock Park on Pleasant Street.
Oh, was there?
Yes.
Okay. Wasn't that, that's the one off of Hot Street, though, isn't it?
Yes. No, no, in the Hot Street, past Hot Street.
Well, if you go down Broad Cove Nature Trail, it's on the right hand side.
Oh, you run into it, but that-
Yeah, I think we used to go up Pleasant Street with my dad.
It was at Dayton Rock Park on Beach, it said Beach Street, it was across, there used to be a pond there in fact.
Yeah, that's the same dump.
Which was getting there, and my first bicycle came out of that dump.
Oh, yeah? Anyway, whichever one it is, it closed in 1970 in Tremont Street Dump. Began operation, I'm not sure if it began operation before 1970, but that was the one we used back in 1970 and the one we still use today, but we use it in a different fashion. At that time, there was no curbside pickup. Residents went to the dump and disposed of everything. It was cans, bottles, yard waste, what have you, went to the dump and got buried. Curbside pickup started in 1997, and Peter Borges happened to be the individual that began curbside service in the town of Dayton, and he's still serving us today. In June, I spoke with him. I believe he had 45 years with the town of Dayton, and I think he's treated the town pretty good over the years. Pay-as-you-throw, everybody knows that system, and recycling started in the mid-'90s. At that time, recycling was in a dual stream where, or triple stream. You separated your bottles, your cans, your plastics. And that's how we did it back then. The pay-as-you-throw was created to offset the cost of curbside pickup. We, we continue that today, except for it is now a single stream, which probably started sometime after I got on the Board of Selectmen, which was 2008 to 2010, thereabouts, I suppose. And that remains the same. So I have in front of me a, this is the front cover of the Massachusetts 2030 Solid Waste Master Plan. It says, "Working Together Towards Zero Waste." So the bottom line and the goal of Mass DEP is to have zero waste sometime down the road, not, that will be after 2050. So some of us won't be here, but some of us will. So we need to consider the future of our children and the future of our town. So how do we get there? Well, one of the things that's happening this year is the disposal ban in transfer stations of food waste, mattresses, and textiles. We're not so concerned with food waste, but we are concerned with mattresses and textiles. Textiles already has been taken care of by the Board through the Pink Bag Program. And that's been very successful. A lot of people, when they come into town, we explain to them about the Pink Bag System. That takes the textiles out of our trash, and we get paid a whopping penny? Two cents what?
Two cents a pound.
Two cents a pound for it. So it does help a little bit. It's a little bit of money. I think the main benefit of it is that we take a, how many tons? How many pounds?
Eight, we do about 3,000 pounds a month.
Okay. So and that saves us money on solid waste disposal when it goes to, prevent it to be burned. We're now discussing what, how we're going to deal with mattresses down the road, because they want them to be recycled if they are good and clean mattresses. We don't have the capabilities for that. I don't believe by November 20, of '22, we'll be accepting them any longer, so we have to find an alternative. There are alternatives. And through education and public outreach, people will know what those alternatives are. So this is from that master plan. I just want to quickly read it. "In the 2010 to 2020 Solid Waste Master Plan, Mass DEP established a goal to reduce total disposal by 2 million tons on an annual basis from 6,550,000 tons in 2008 to 4,550,000 tons in 2020. This would represent a 30% reduction. However, through 2018, total disposal was at 5,660,000 tons, a decrease of 890,000 tons, or just 14%. So what does that tell us? People either are not recycling, which is probably the main cause of not, uh, being only at the 14%. They go on further to quote the 2020 to 2030 goal, which is a waste reduction goal for 2030 to reduce disposal by 1.7 million tons annually from a 2018 baseline of 5.7 million tons to 4 million tons by 2030. Again, a 30% increase, I mean, sorry, a 30% reduction in tons disposed. This, this goal would place us on track to achieve our 2050 goal. This is below, which is, I think, a dream, but Mass DEP's waste reduction goal for 2050 is to reduce disposal by about 5.1 million tons by 2050 from a 2018 baseline of 5.7 million tons to 570,000 tons by 2050. A 90% reduction in tons disposed of. I don't think what they take into account is the more people that are in the country, the more trash is going to be generated, so. But anyway, that's their goal in their, in their waste reduction plan. I don't want to take up a lot of your time, so I'm going to just move on to a few things. The benefits of a, oh, this is a solid waste advisory committee, but I ought to be cycling because I think they should do both as if we're going to have a committee. A balanced committee will have at least nine members representing a wide range of interests, including, but not limited to citizens, public interest groups, business, waste management industry, and local elected public officials. And I found that to be true in most communities because I, I ended up getting information about the goals of five different communities that had these committees. So the similarities of these, each had seven to nine members, usually consisting of residents, representatives from the Board of Health, Board of Selectmen, or the Designee, and Highway Department. Sorry, Tom. Number two, public outreach and education to generate community interest and involvement in solid waste and recycling. Number three, reduce recycling contamination rates, which is still a big problem within the town and many other towns, it's just not only us. This is why our recycling costs have almost tripled in the last 10 years because of the contamination on our recyclables. It's pretty simple. Like a peanut butter jar, throw it away because it's too much of a pain probably to clean it out. But your soup cans, your pizza boxes, if they have grease on them, you shouldn't be throwing them into the recycle bin. We've had people throw away pizza box with pizza in it, pizza pieces. You know, you can't, you can't expect the prices to go down when we're doing things like that. Number four, monitoring report on the waste management industry, including recycling markets, trends, excuse me, trends and material pricing. Number five, collaborate with the Board of Health to review and revise the rules and regulations governing the transfer station and develop recommendations prior to their adoption. Number six is develop a list of suggestions for town departments to encourage waste reduction and recycling efforts in municipal buildings. And finally, number seven, and this is just a short list that most communities have if they have a solid waste advisory committee. They all had pretty much these same standards. Is to review and assist in drafting requests for proposals, agreements, and contracts for solid waste and recycling. So in closing, in the last 10 years, the cost of solid waste management has nearly doubled and recycling costs have nearly tripled. I remember one year they went from, I think it was 2017, they went from like $30 to $90. And, you know, it's just a crazy fluctuating market that we're trying to keep up with it. So going forward, and maybe not for us, maybe not for tomorrow, but for the future, the burden on the Board of Selectmen or the Board of Health is probably, not probably, but it will be too much to try to meet all these demands of, and monitoring contracts and so forth, so. So we believe the time is now to consider the creation of this committee in order to meet the goals set by DEP. Thank you, everyone. Thank you for listening. I didn't get any hecklers, so I guess that's a good thing.
Well, you may get some. Any questions from the Board?
Yeah.
Selectman Hull?
I truly agree and support the merits of what you're requesting. I'm just looking at it, I'm just looking at it from a management perspective. And I, I've heard some criticism that there are many, many committees in this town, many of which are under the auspices of the Board of Selectmen. I just wonder if this could be a subcommittee of the Board of Health and managed through the Board of Health.
I don't see why not. They're going to be making recommendations only, and so long as we, or the Board remains an appointed committee, we're going to have to run those recommendations by either a town administrator or yourselves. So they're a pretty self, I don't know what the word is, self-surviving committee that would report first to the Board of Health, and then we go from there.
So that-
There's no reason why it couldn't be. I mean, they wouldn't, I don't believe it would be any additional work. Probably be a help for us if there was a committee instead of us spending time on contracts and proposals and a health agent now records all the volume and all the costs and yes, price per household, number of bags used, it's, so, you know, we have all kinds of spreadsheets going. So I think they would be a help to the Board.
Any other questions? Dr. Z?
So part of the reason we have so many committees is because we want volunteers to help with the work and not have paid staff do it or be required to hire additional paid staff. So certainly I am supportive of the idea of a committee, but my practical concern is just we have had committees with the same vacancies for quite some time, some even a year or two. So my, my practical concern is, would we be able to get people to staff like a committee of nine people? I'm not sure. Probably not.
Well, you've got to bear in mind, this committee would be more fun than some of the other committees that are out there.
And you know I'm speaking like practically. I'm not giving my opinion on if it's needed, not needed, we should or shouldn't. I just don't think we're going to get nine people. We can force one of the selectmen, we could probably force a Board of Health member, but-
Well, we have three or four right here. So we're talking maybe five residents. And as soon as my life gets straightened out, I'll probably be wanting to volunteer. We already have a person wanting to volunteer. I bet you there's two people out there waiting to volunteer.
We've got nine people out there.
Maybe I'm wrong.
We can just pick right now.
I don't know. None of them are smiling, so, you know, maybe they're not ready to volunteer. So do I think we could? Yes, I think we could.
Well, I support the formation of this committee.
Yeah, we'll probably meet only once a month, so it's not like it's a-
Well, I've heard that before.
Heavy duty for me. Well, and we have a couple of contracts coming up in a couple of years, so it's, it's kind of important to the Board of Health to decide that we, you know, start looking at some of this. And as I said, if not for today's world, for future. I mean, you know, the burden is, the burden is going to be too much on anybody, anyone Board. And I think the minds of seven or nine people would be much better than a three-member Board of Health, so. I'll, I'd be the first to admit that.
I have another question.
Selectman?
Um, is, thank you. Is the intent of the form, which I also am going to support, the formation of the committee, is the intent, though, just to do like a cost-benefit analysis of like the current waste recycling versus options for the future?
I guess is, would be one thing. And, and if you have somebody following fluctuations in the market, we call Peter Torres, uh, Peter Torres.
Close.
Peter Borges for assistance, and he, he's good. He lets us know what's going on in the world of solid waste and recycling, and that's our biggest help, but, you know, maybe there's alternatives to pay-as-you-throw. You know?
Yeah. And they would explore that, right? They would have-
Well, it would be something they could explore. Right now, pay-as-you-throw pays, our budget's now a million dollars this year. Pay-as-you-throw, the sale of trash bags supports about 50% of our trash and recycling collection. And we have a few other things going on, but that's the bulk of our budget is the solid waste disposal, solid waste collection, recycling collection, recycling disposal. So it covers about 50% of that. So, you know, you have a choice. You can, as prices go up, you either raise trash, trash bag costs or, I, I'd like to give my view on pay-as-you-throw, though, and leave people with this and yourselves. If I'm, if I'm an elderly couple and I'm buying trash bags and I only generate one, one-dollar bag a week, and you, as a young person with four children, are generating five, two-dollar bags a week, to take away the pay-as-you-throw, I don't think that's fair and equitable to the elderly family creating one small bag of trash a week. That's my view on it, and I will always support pay-as-you-throw, but I could be wrong. Maybe those are alternatives, so. I want to throw out there for your consideration. You know, if you, I'd be happy to take more questions, but-
I have another one. Sorry. No, you've been waiting.
In our discussion about whether it should be under the auspices of the Board of Health or the Board of Selectmen, I see on a daily basis the work that LeAnn and Karen have to do, tracking down these committees to get things posted, to reserve a hall. If the Board of Health did it, in fairness to someone who does a great job, who's pretty busy in your office already, is ask Rosalyn how she feels about extra.
I don't, I may be wrong, but I don't think we'd have much involvement. We would only be taking their recommendations and reports
Okay.
to review them. Am I wrong?
You're right.
You know, Barbara's our new member. She'll be the chairman after I leave in, end of April, or probably before then, to get her feet wet.
Yeah.
But she's coming along and I'm, I'm very satisfied with where we're headed now.
As long as she's, Rosalyn's okay.
Yeah, as far as posting, we would go through LeAnn and Karen anyway, no matter whose committee it was.
Yeah, she kind of keeps track of this building.
Right, and we, she keeps track of what's available and what's not available. So how does the Board feel about on a future date that we put this on the agenda to possibly form a committee? You know, we'd ask our town administrator to look into this. I know the next couple of weeks, the next couple of, actually, the next couple of meetings, we're going to be busy with budgets and everything else, so I'm not sure how quickly we can- So I'm not sure how quickly we can get to this, but maybe in May. Dr. Z?
I just wanted to make one last comment in response to Mr. Piers. I didn't mean additional options in lieu of pay as, pay as you throw. I meant like, for example, some towns have automatic pickup. That's more what I meant. Those options, if we're living in a post Peter Borges world, what are the options that we have available to us is what I'd be curious if the committee will explore.
Personally, I think that's where we should be. There's a big expense and a labor that's, it's a labor-intensive thing doing it manually.
And benefits, like for personnel and all that.
But he still comes in the lowest bidder, even with those guys with mechanical arms. And for us to buy barrels at $125 each with 4,000 some odd homes, and we're talking a little bit of money here, which we could probably get a grant for, don't know how much, but the grants are available to purchase these. And this is something the committee could focus on also. I mean, there's, there's all kinds of things. There's plenty out there that this committee could do to help us, you know, and help the town. So.
Thank you.
It's my story.
Thank you, Mr. Piers, for your presentation and bringing us to our attention. The next agenda item is Jenna Montero. You're going to give us an update on the Briggs Garden.
Hey, hey, hey.
Donation correspondent.
Hi, everybody.
How are you?
So I'm super excited. This garden is finally going in the ground. We're not going to say it's getting off the ground. It's finally getting planted. So I came tonight, if in case you guys had any questions or anything about it. I know you three are always there with us when we're out doing stuff with it, so we appreciate that. We do have, I believe it was eight yards of manure that was donated by Ferry Cow Farm on Shoplot Road in Swansea. So we wanted to ask that the town accept the donation for that. And I think per my schedule, depending on the last frost, we're going to start planting the, somewhere towards the end of April and get everything going.
So my question is, I know you're going to need help and assistance in moving the loam and the manure. Do you have a date planned for that?
So I believe, Mr. Ferry.
Mike, are you volunteering?
Did we get the manure moved already? So we already have the manure. I believe the compost may have been moved over already. If not, it's going to be moved over in the next two weeks or so. We did the donation for that last year. So that stuff's all there. We have the perlite that's going to be mixed with it. We're planning on setting up a scout project to start just because of, this is the first time we're really doing anything like this on such a big scale that we want to kind of see what kind of labor we're going to need. So we're going to utilize the scouts to get everything started. And then I would like to figure out how I can get like a sign up in case anybody else would like to come out and help plant or harvest. We're going to be planting in like sections. We're going to start with some of the beds and cold crops in sections. And then we're going to rotate out some crops as the season progresses and we move on to the warmer stuff and then back into the cold stuff. It's very exciting.
Believe me, it is. I'm an avid gardener. I've been doing this for over 40 years. And I look forward to being able to assist in any way for this. Now, I know you've got 10 raised beds.
We have, yes, we have, so we have eight box gardens, as I like to call them. We have two ADA compliant beds in there as well that we're going to work on filling. Right now, we're waiting, we're going to be meeting with the ICOM to go over the quotes that we have for the final purchases to get everything started. But you guys know how I am. I have like a five-year plan, so I've got all this stuff already lined up to come.
And is the fence all around the property?
Yes, we do have the fence actually. We're looking into purchase. We've got some little gaps underneath. So our little furry friends can't get in. I got to get, we're working on the chicken wire and stuff to put down there, make sure everything's all nice and secure. I've actually, the garden club has also reached out to me. I have a meeting with them on the 13th. So we might be able to see if we could get some boxes put in on the railings of the shed. Going to, in the works of talking out some of that stuff, getting some flowers in there. They're going to see about helping us with that stuff, so.
And I've seen BP there the past few days. Is the ramp complete for the shed?
Not to my knowledge. I don't really have a lot of information in regards to like the shed and the ramp and access to all of that stuff yet. I figure I'll wait until the beginning of April, you know, maybe like a week or so before I need to really get out there. We have storage right now for everything that we have. So I'm going to, I'm giving them a break, so I'm not harassing anybody else about that.
Well, I want to thank you for the great work you're doing over there and the scouts and Tanya for all the work that you guys are doing over there. And I look forward to
Oh, thank you.
Reaping the benefits for the food pantry.
Yeah, I'm also in the works with Mrs. Wilkins. We're trying to get like a list compiled of what the patrons there and at Lincoln Village think that they might use most, so that we can make sure like everything is getting proper. Because I could come up with all kinds of stuff to plant and put in there and that I'll use, but I want to make sure it's what everybody else needs to use. So we're trying to work out like a survey, so to speak, that we can get everybody's input on.
I had one question. When did you want the board to discuss the, accepting the donation?
Tonight. Actually, I sent LeAnn a letter and she has it for you guys. I'm number 12 on the correspondence, so she was nice enough to bump me up so I can get back to scouts.
And there wasn't, I felt like there was something else we had to accept, but maybe I'm just...
Nope, it's just that. And then I have the quotes with ICOM.
Yeah, I've seen the invoice, but that's going to agricultural commission.
Yeah, yeah, ICC guys.
Thank you. Selectmen Hall.
When do you envision a garden dedication? Are you going to have a garden dedication ceremony?
I didn't think about that, honestly. Like, I'm just so like, like focused on, I don't know.
This is an awesome project.
It really is.
It brings a lot of positive to the town.
And normally, I'm kind of like the backend person that kind of does the stuff. Like, so being upfront and like, like doing everything is kind of not my, my area of expertise, but I think that's a very good idea. I'm thinking maybe once we have some stuff in there and it's, you know, nice and pretty, that maybe we could do something like that.
Yeah, I'm going to put Raff Adolphin on the spot. I know that the historic commission, you're a member of the historic commission, they're putting a plaque or they're putting a sign on James Briggs Garden. What's the status of that? I don't remember what the status is.
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't heard anything either, so.
Yeah, I mean, that might be part of the
Yeah, that would be, that would be amazing.
To that, whenever that plaque is complete, the historic commission, the board, scouts, you, Tanya, can go there and we can have it, invite the public, obviously, and they can get a little tour and maybe do some weeding and spread some manure and
Yep. We'll put a ribbon across the gate. Cut the ribbon.
I wanted to say one thing.
Dr. Z?
When we first had this idea to do the garden, I think a year and a half ago, maybe a year ago.
It feels like ages ago, honestly. It was like before COVID.
I just wanted to let you and Tanya and all the scouts know that I think the town does owe you a debt of gratitude. When we had that idea, I mean, I knew it would be good, but I never knew that it would be this good and this big in scope.
Yeah, I don't think we all thought it was actually going to like really take off and
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Again, thank you, the scouts and everybody else that's involved. Thank you.
So if there could be a vote to accept the manure from Kerry's, Ferry's Cow Farm?
Is that?
Yes, it's actually in the, towards the end of the packet because we moved Ms. Montero up, so she can get in and out.
Okay, all right. Expediting the process. All right.
I guess I don't see it on the agenda, but
I don't either.
It's on the correspondence.
It is. It's 12A.
That's not what I
Oh, it was actually
No, I don't see it on the agenda.
No, I don't see it on the agenda.
That's why I
So, yeah, in the original agenda, like the agenda was revised.
Yes, you're right.
In the original agenda, it was 12A, but then it was moved up to four.
That's the origin. Yeah, so where is it?
And the letter, and the letter in the packet.
Oh, it said donation correspondence. Yes. Okay, I'm all set. Yeah. So it's a little unusual. I'll entertain a motion to accept, was it horse or cow manure?
Eight yards.
Cow manure. To accept, for the town of Dayton, to accept, was it, was it eight tons? Eight yards of cow manure.
So moved.
Second?
Second, with thanks and appreciation to Ferry's Farm?
Ferry's Cow Farm on Shoplot Road in Swansea.
Any discussion on this? If not, I'll call for a vote. Selectmen Hall?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Kim Bichikos, an aye.
Thank you.
So again, thank you.
Very much.
Public input? Is there any public input? Come to the microphone and please identify yourself.
Timothy Ryan, 316 Main Street. I had a prepared statement. But I would just say this, is that events transpired in a meeting last Thursday evening that I take, let me put it this way. What I said I will remain to say, okay, because there was no individual on this planet who will treat me or talk to me in any way, shape or form in a manner that was done. And whatever this board has to do in regards to that, that's on you. And again, if the town of Dayton, if the members or the residents of this town want to recall me, do as such, because I will stand by my statement. And I will do it again. I will not be belittled by anyone on this planet. My family never talked to me like that. My brothers, cousins, you name it. My friends don't talk to me like that. I will never be belittled in a meeting by such a foolish idiot who I served with for six years in this town and do a damn thing and the people on this board know it and you let it transpire.
We're not going to talk about somebody who was not present. And you know what? I was offended by you using the F-word at a meeting, okay? I don't care what was said to you. I was offended by that.
I apologize for that. Because if that slipped out out of the heat of the moment, then so be it. Okay? Because other people need to understand, I don't put up with that BS. Plain and simple. It's bullshit and you all know it.
Please, Sparta.
Have a nice night. You watch your mouth.
Have a nice night.
Or I'll ask to have him removed.
He's leaving.
It's said on TV, it is said on camera, it is said on radio, this nation. What I said, I will stand by.
Any other public input? Is there anybody on Zoom interested in public input? I don't think so. Announcements. The Friends of the Dayton Public Library are sponsoring a Meet the Candidates Night on Monday, which is next Monday, March 28th at 7:00 PM at the Dayton Middle School. For more information, please contact dytonfriends@gmail.com. Can we be a little quiet, please? Hello? Can we be a little quiet, please? The annual town election notice, the annual town election will be held in, at Dayton Elementary School on Saturday, April 9th, 2022, from 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And Dr. Z, will you read the rest of the announcement, please?
There is a townwide parking ban in effect through April 1st, 2022. No person shall allow their vehicle to be parked on the street so as to obstruct snow removal. A reminder that open burning season is from January 15th through May 1st between 10:00 AM and 4:00 PM. A $10 permit from Dayton Fire Rescue is required prior to any open burning, and that can also be purchased online at dytonfire.com. Spring fundraiser for the Dayton Historical Society. Spring table centerpieces are avail, will be available, excuse me, or are available at Arujo Farms, 1522 Williams Street on Sunday, April 10th, 2022. $40 per person and includes all materials. Call 508-669-6988 to pre-register. The Dayton Lions Club Food Bank Distribution will be held next at 8:00 AM on Saturday, April 16th, 2022 at Town Hall Lower Level, 979 Somerset Avenue. And lastly, Rabies Vaccination Day will be held Saturday, May 21st, 2022, from 3:00 to 4:00 PM at the Dayton Animal Shelter, 821 Tremont Street. $20 cash only per immunization. For more information, please call the Dayton Board of Health at 774-872-0943. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to ask that the board take some items out of order since Mr. Piers is present. These are budget items. I want to ask that the board make a motion to take on the new business, agenda item number 10. The 292 account, Animal Control Officer, 433 Waste Collection and Disposal, 510 Board of Health Regulation and Inspection, and 519 Board of Health Administration.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion on that? If not, I'll call for a vote. Selectmen Hall?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Kim Bichikos, an aye. 292.
Thank you.
So if it's, so if it, so if it's okay, so if it's okay, it's okay, Mr. Chair, like if we can wait till the end of the Board of Health presentation on the animal, so actually on the ACO, so we can have the police department join in as well?
Which item is that now?
So that's the ACO, I think, 292, just because it does involve the police department.
Well, the police department's here, so do we want, I saw Chief McDonald in
Yeah, yeah, if that works. I just, they're intertwined, so I just wanted to
I'll yield to, are they here?
Yes.
So
So we're going to discuss account number 292.
Yes. So this is for the, this is for the Animal Control Officer, Mr. Chairman. Just want to pull up actually my notes. But you'll see in this, you know, like in, like in the impact of this is also reflected like in the proposed updated job descriptions for the Animal Control Officer and also for, and also for the, also for the Animal Inspector. Like, oh, yeah, like when you look at the Animal Control Budget, you'll, you'll also see an offset in one in, hold on, just let me pull it up, in the, just bear with me. So like, in the Board of Health Regulation and Inspection Budget, we are proposing, we are proposing, oh, yeah, like I'm proposing to, to take roughly the $3,800 included in the, like in the Animal Inspection under, so the under budget 510 for the Board of Health Regulation and including it, like actually like in 292, so the entire salary for the Animal Control Officer is included. When you look at that as well, and just going over to FY23, you will see that we're proposing like almost a $23,000 increase, a $23,000 increase in, actually in the salary for the, for the Animal Control Officer. Yeah, like at the beginning of this budget process, the budget process began with an analysis. So it began with analysis of the ACO roles, responsibilities and work hours. Like in what, like in what was actually found, and what was actually found is that our budget doesn't adequately reflect the hours in, so it doesn't, like it doesn't actually reflect the hours and time that the ACO and Animal Inspector puts into a job. So we're proposing, so we're proposing to update the job description and budget to reflect these challenges. Like with the challenge, with the changes also being informed, with the changes also being informed by other local communities as well. Like in your packet, like in your packet, we did include our comps. Like it's, so yeah, like actually comps about how, so, so, so like, you know, so when our budget backed up, we included a comp that actually, that actually shows that right, that, so that actually here in 2022, our ACO, actually her salary is only $3,000 more than the Assistant ACO and other local communities, where the full-time ACO makes like a range between 40 and $63,000 roughly. So like we're proposing to bring the salary of the ACO up to, you know, what we believe is actually fair to the ACO based on the hours worked. So like and based on the work that the ACO puts in on a regular basis as well.
So presently, right now, the ACO works 20 hours a week?
She, so
24/7.
Yeah, yeah, it's 24/7. It's unpredictable, but when we look at, so like when, so as we did an analysis on the type of work she's been doing and the cases that have been involved in that, it's much more so actually like all that information Uh, so actually, like, all that information points really to the fact that the ACO makes around $8.50 an hour based on her current workload.
Which is below minimum wage.
It is.
Lieutenant Cronin, do you want to speak on this? I know you've, you've done some research on this.
Yeah.
Would you, uh, just come to the microphone, please?
Like Tom McTrum said, is, we took a look at it, we saw the, the hours that she was putting in, the calls. We looked back till 2018. As of this morning, she responded to 800 calls, just herself, since 2018. But there's follow-ups that were getting put in. So we're, we're working with Stacy. Stacy's working with us to learn the system, to put things in. And, you know, we broke it down and like, uh, Tom McTrum said, it came out to, I want to say it was 8:41 or 8:42 an hour that she was making for the job that she was doing. So it's really just about bringing her to the industry standard in the area and professionalizing that role. And this is the first step in it.
Thank you. Does the board have any questions?
I don't have any questions.
I do. We're in somewhat difficult times. I know the outstanding job.
Could you just, uh, speak up so we can, uh, record this?
I know the outstanding job that Ms. Ferry does. But I look at my budget chart and I see a budget request increase of 66%. And there are going to be groups that are going to come up and they're going to hear the word no. I understand what everyone is saying. Are there any outside funding sources that can help with this? Rather than requesting it be totally the taxpayers?
Not, not that I know of presently.
Any budget cuts that could be made?
So, so, uh, uh, yeah, so, yeah, so like in my, uh, so like in my budget recommendations, I did include a total of, so I did include a total of, uh, $40,000, like in cuts that were actually made over the request of the departmental budget. Uh, like, so like, we'd be able to afford something like this, because I have said no, but this really warranted attention in my...
No, 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 I, I, I truly get it. Are there any budget cuts in... Building repairs and maintenance or other areas in this budget, the 292 budget? That could be made?
Yep. So, uh, like, so we, uh, so we have been through this budget. We have the maintenance of the animal shelter trailer that we need to keep up with as well and maintain and invest in. So I'm not sure, like Lieutenant Cronin, if you want to speak to that as well?
Yeah, I wish I could see that better, but I can't. I know we've gone through it a few times, but, uh, we, we really tried to do exactly what you're, you're saying, is try to get out of some other lines, uh...
I mean, I'm not questioning whether...
To help that.
Not, is Ferry is worthy of that. It's just...
Whether, and here's the thing, like I, I've been explaining, whether it's her or whether it's somebody else, it's how do you, how do you take care of that position in the town where there is such a responsibility? So, again, I don't think it's the, it's the person. I think it's the position that we're looking at anyway. Sorry.
Oh, no, I had a comment. I'll wait till you're done, sorry.
So as far as the building maintenance, luckily, uh, there's not much that we're foreseeing as far as coming up with that. Repairs, I believe that's, please correct me if I'm wrong, I believe that's coming from, uh, Inspector Agnew.
Correct.
What's that? It should be $0.
Yeah, $0, I'm sorry, yes.
So that did get cut out of the, uh, the proposal to get moved to the other line.
You have a comment?
Yeah. I totally, uh, respect, um, Selectman Hull's concerns. Um, my, the reason why I'm going to support this is simply because I think that if, and I'm not saying this, but like if ACO Ferry were not here right now, like tomorrow, we would not be able to hire someone for $22,058.40. Not happening. So I'm going to support this.
Any other comments?
So, and just as a reminder, we did, in order to make this work, we did a combine the, so like in, um, in 510, we took out the $3,800 for the Animal Inspector and combined that in here as well. So like, we, uh, yeah, so, so, yeah, so, yeah. So, yeah, we consolidated that in order really to find efficiencies, really to make this work and combine those, uh, funding sources, really.
I wanted to, just for clarification purposes.
Yes.
When you said that your, with your recommendations, they were total, with the total municipal budget.
Yes.
It was $40,000 less, correct?
Approximately $40,000, yes.
Is that even though we went not with your recommendation on the town clerk's salary? So it's probably like, what, $30,000 less or around there?
Yeah, that was at the beginning, so some things have evolved.
I'm just trying to keep a tally.
Yeah, no, and...
As well.
Yeah, no, that's, yes.
Thank you. I have no further questions.
So I'll throw this out as a, as a possibility, and I, I don't know how, Ms. Ferry, I don't know how realistic this is, but she's now scheduled for 20 hours. We know she does more than 20 hours, but I'm just wondering if we can phase in up to 35 hours at some future day. So in other words, give her 30 hours now at the, at that rate for the $45,000, which would actually be less than $45,000. But if we phase it into 30,000 for this fiscal year and go up, uh, 30 hours for this fiscal year and go up to 35 hours the following fiscal year as a consideration. I don't know how realistic that is. I, I know how busy she is. I've, I've had many conversations with her, so I know how, how busy. So when I'm saying I'm throwing out 30 hours a week, it's probably not even realistic to...
The only thing I can speak to is that I think if she has the flexibility to be able to work that...
It's not a set hours.
Um, I mean, I know for a fact, just today, um, she's probably done nine hours of work. She was on the phone when I got here. So it's, it's going to vary. It's like any other day. She may have four hours one day, 10 hours the next. But as long as she can make that equitable and, for the week, I, I mean, I, I don't want to speak for you, Stacy, or anybody, but...
Chief McDonald?
Yeah, I just want to say something. She, she's been doing this for 12 years now. And I'm not just saying her, like Lieutenant said, looking at the job itself. But for her, she's been doing this for 12 years. She's doing it by herself right now. We've tried. I know in the past we've had a part timer. Part timer stayed for a little bit, left, didn't stay, didn't want nothing to do with it. She works every day. She works weekends. She has to go on call, she'd be called. Something, we'd be out somewhere on Saturday night. She'd have to come out and leave wherever she was doing to answer the call. So, you know, looking at her, she's, she's put a time in, you know, she's, she's doing this by herself. So, you know, we, she looked forward into trying to doing this, 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 this job, um, different now, you know? And like Lieutenant, he'd been, he'd been working on this for, for a couple of months now, trying to straighten it out. Where, the way it's been now is, you know, it's going to change. It has to. Just, just, that's just the way it is now. It's, it's busy here now. We have a lot more houses and, and homes and whatever you want to say in this town now than we did 20 years ago. So we're busy. It's a, it's a, it's a busy job.
And the, the work has increased as more and more of us get chickens and stuff like that that she has to do, inspect the barns and, and chicken coops and all that kind of stuff. I, I get that. So I want to withdraw my even consideration for, uh, reducing it to 35 hours, and I will support the 35 hours. Is there any further discussion on this?
How many, I'm sorry, I got confused with your statement.
Yeah, she's supposedly working 20 hours, which we know she's working more than 20 hours.
Always has since I've been here.
And this, uh, in the job description, we're talking about 35 hours.
Okay.
I suggested as a possibility 30 hours, but as is, that's been pointed out to me, that's unrealistic. Even though we say it's 30 hours, she's going to be working more than 30 hours. And quite frankly, and quite frankly, she needs to get paid for that. It's not fair for us to, uh...
She's, she's in the station every day for two hours. She's doing her rounds. She's up at the shelter. She's doing everything she's supposed to do and plus. So it's fair, it's fair.
And some of the work, uh, quite frankly, is not pleasant work, so we have to take that into consideration. Uh, Selectman Hull?
I was just going to make a motion.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman? I would like to make a motion that the Board of Selectmen recommend an account 292 for the Animal Control Officer budget of $55,750.
Is there a second?
I am going to second that.
Any further discussion?
I do have one question.
Yep.
And I don't want to open a can of worms, so a simple yes or no is fine. Have we ever, so I did see on the salary survey that Somerset and Swansea, um, share an animal control officer. Um, and I know Rehoboth has its own, so probably that's not an option. But have we ever looked into or even thought, considered that, that? And I'm not saying that you, I want you to be the ACO for the other town that would join us, but is that not a po, even like a possibility? I'm still going to support this, but I would be curious to know the answer to that.
I guess it would depend on who you would want to go in with.
It couldn't be a town that already has one, like Rehoboth.
Berkeley, Pitts, and Pre-Can all go together.
Uh huh.
Uh, Rehoboth stands by itself.
Mm-hmm.
Peacock stands by itself. Somerset, Swansea is the only one that I know of that is the joint ACO.
Okay.
Selectman Hull?
I just want to point this out, and I learned this from attending the Board of Health meetings. And right now, it hasn't been an issue, but it's a potential big issue. Correct me if I'm wrong, the avian flu is in the area. And if it hits Dayton, my understanding is that it would affect a radius of 10 miles and all poultry within the town of Dayton. If that were to go down, this ferry is going to be very, very busy.
She'll be doing 80 hours. You'll be back to $4 an hour.
That is, that is...
Seriously, though, that, yeah.
And my understanding is, so, um, I'm not sure who in the Board of Health is kind of overseeing it, but have you had any, uh, reported cases in Dayton?
We have not, but those that get reported to the Animal Inspector are not directly to us.
Oh, okay.
State work.
We just had an update today that it is in the area. People not, if you see dead migratory birds, do not remove them yourselves. Please call the ACO so they can do that. And if your chickens are sick or dying, please, 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 if you don't call me, definitely call DPH so they can send somebody out. There is a poultry line set up now, so you can call them so they can send somebody out to test.
And just, uh, to add to that, it's, if they have the avian flu, it's very quick. So in other words, I may not see any signs today. Tomorrow, they'd be dead, basically. And if my chickens are dead, we'd notify you so that they can be... Autopsy, or whatever that, that they're going to call it, and, uh, and deal with that, so... And people shouldn't, I know some people, free-range their chickens, they probably shouldn't be doing that now because of, they could catch it from, uh, birds. Any further discussion on this? Selectman Hull?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Kim Pacheco is an aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much.
So the next item, uh, I would like to go to is 433 Waste Collection and Disposal.
Mm-hmm. 433, you said?
433.
433 Waste Collection and Disposal.
I don't think I have that one. Sure, let me give you my copy. Oh, these aren't in order.
Should be after 432.
Yeah, no, they're not in order, sorry. It's not me.
Do you want mine?
No, it's okay, I found it. Thank you, though.
Okay, uh, Mr. Pius. It's obviously an increase, but I think you have an explanation for that.
Well, probably 50, 60% of this is contract. And we're just waiting for some prices. We just got Borges' in on, uh, rubbish collection and recycling collection. So if you, and they, they've increased, uh, one is a little under from what you see. But 5291 came in at 209,000. We estimated 210,000. 5292 is... Came in at 225, 225,800. But we make up for that in 5302, because we have a number of 54,000, which is now 67,500. We're waiting on numbers for the landfill testing and monitoring. That needs to go out to bid this year because we've got to get it done by July 1st. Our only hangup with, uh, putting that out for bid is whether we are going to bid all three types of tests to one individual or all three tests to different individuals. We've been working with the town administrator, uh, waiting for an answer. We still have time to do this, but we feel there are sufficient funds there to go forward, uh, through this process at least, um, until such time the bid goes out and numbers come back. Yeah, other than that, um, unless you have any specific questions, uh, I think a lot of it stayed the same. Uh, if you have a question on any increases, just shoot away.
Selectman Hull, you had your hand up.
Um, regarding trash bags, my understanding is the cost of trash bags, correct?
Couple of years back, yeah.
And how much revenue are you gen, generating from these trash bags?
Total revenue from trash bags or just from the increase?
Total revenue.
All right, Ken. You got the total revenue?
I can pull it up right here, if that's okay, Jim Pacheco? So, okay. So the... So, um, so our last fiscal year in terms of total revenue, um, the, uh, the trash bag revenue was $346,000. Like in this, in this fiscal year for FY '22, we, uh, like we projected, um, uh, about $229,000. Uh, going into FY '23, based on the increase, based on the actual, and the revenues we saw last fiscal year, and based on our trends, and based on our current year trends through the month of February, uh, like we're projecting, um, an increase in revenue to the tune of, um, the, to the, about $35,000 increasing our revenue, uh, based on the, based on the increased place of trash bags. So, and, so, and those are being informed not only by the high year we saw in FY '21, so, but by the first, by the first eight months of the fiscal year, uh, like in FY '22, which really give us the most accurate trends.
So that's about, if you're going where I think you're going, that's about what I, uh, we anticipated. The 50, when we anticipated the 50% of trash, trash bag sales offset 50% of the cost of the hauler, which is, I don't know if that's where you were going.
Yes.
So, and, so it's kind of... So, and, so it's kind of like right on the money, I think. Trash bag sales being 50% of what the hauler charges us.
So, the trash bag program isn't self-sufficient?
Trash bag program initially, when we started the pay-as-you-throw program, was to offset the cost of curbside pickup. That is its sole purpose.
Offset, not?
Not completely pay for it. We would have to charge $4, $5 a bag.
It'd be double.
Double.
To make it sufficient to pay the hauler's charges.
Okay, no, thank you. Yeah.
Exactly what I was. Dr. Z?
Thank you.
Well, you know, I just want to comment for a moment, if I may. A lot of people say trash bags should be free. Well, I go back to the scenario I gave with the old couple, with one trash bag, and the couple with four children with five trash bags or four trash bags a week. And so if, if we're going to get rid of pay-as-you-throw, then the money has to come from general taxation. And there's nothing fair and equitable about an elderly couple who only have one bag paying the same tax as someone who has four or five large bags of trash out there. So I do support pay-as-you-throw, and again, as I mentioned, the, this is where the Solid Waste and Recycling Advisory Committee come in. Maybe they can find an answer.
What I would say to that, and I will try to take, don't look at me like that, I will try to take the position of the young couple with the young kids, even though I don't have any. I think what they might say would be, and I'm sure they wouldn't disagree with your argument, but I think that for seniors on a fixed income, they do have more opportunities to get tax relief through things like the senior tax exemption and things, whereas that's not really available to the younger families in town.
Not all seniors, only those within a certain income.
Correct, and 70 and above.
I'm not eligible for any senior benefits.
And it's a very small percentage of people that are eligible for that, unfortunately.
We did do, I better admit, we did do the seniors a favor by offering single-sale trash bags over prime time, instead of putting out $10 or $20 at one time, so, you know, it's, it's a double-edged sword, I think, as far as I'm concerned, so.
And if we eliminate pay-as-you-go, there are some people, and so people's taxes would go up, but some people have dumpsters in the yard, and they would be paying for trash when they have a dumpster, whereas the bags, they're not buying the bags because they've got the dumpster.
If we raised the price of trash bags, we could lower taxes.
Yeah.
You know, so it comes down to.
Yeah. Selectman Hull?
I'll say this with Mr. Ferry in the same room, we really need to look at an alternative, alternative energy source up at the transfer station to help generate some revenue.
I mean, nobody liked my idea when I said we should do it like we did in the old days and bring our trash and recyclers to the transfer station.
No one's going to like that.
Do away with curbside pickup. Nobody liked that idea.
It'll have to be open seven, yeah, it'll be, have to be open seven days a week.
I do have one question.
Yeah.
And I, we've, you've touched on this before, but, and I think what you're going to say is that the committee would look at this, but if, if, for example, we have weekly recycling right now, and part of the reason the recycling costs went up is because a couple years back, we went to weekly, and I believe it was every other week. If the committee were to look at like a potential cost savings of going back to every other week, when would a change like that have to be made? It would have to be made when the contract?
Probably outside of his contract, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Can I jump in and answer that?
Sure. I mean, right now, the recycling collection, which includes the disposal, is 225. Do you have the single, go ahead. Todd, Mr. Pillings wants to speak.
Thank you, sir.
Yep, so I just, Todd Pillings, Health Agent, I just want to say, so, these issues are very deep. It's not as simple as raise the price of what a mattress is and everything goes away. This is why we felt that a solid waste committee should be looking at this, because it's far bigger than just three people. And you get into what's the price of a trash bag, and should we do curbside, should we do transfer station? So that's why we want that. The bi-weekly question, three years ago when we put this out to bid to everybody, we asked them to give us two prices, one for weekly recycling, one for bi-weekly recycling. The price was the same either way, because they still have to haul the same amount of recycling, and so even you'd, you'd come to town five days, you'd have to make two trips a day in order to make it happen, so it was, or you're doing half the town, so it ended up being the same volume, the same trips and everything, so.
So it didn't end up to be, end up being that much of a?
It was no difference.
Okay.
For any of the, any of the bidders.
I stand corrected, thank you. All right, thank you.
It, you would think it would be that way, but you're hauling twice as much, or twice as many trips, so.
Understood. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Good job, Todd.
I forgot about that, I was all, when the bids came in.
That's a good point.
He's absolutely 100% correct, so. Now, as I said, these are going to, some of these are going to change. They're estimates based on past history, and we do keep a history on volume and prices and so forth and so on, so if there's no other questions on 433, we can.
Are there any, any other questions?
I did have one last question, but it's just in response to what the documents they gave us. At the bottom, you wrote, how, who to approve contract, BOH agenda, BOS agenda. My only comment to that would be, I think that the Board of Health had negotiated the last few contracts, and it didn't come to the Board of Selectmen, so I guess that's my implication.
What are we talking about? Procurement?
Contract execution.
Yeah, Borges.
Well, we have a template for it now. This year, we didn't go out to bid on it, and we just got an extension. Those type of contracts, I believe, do not have to go off a bid.
No, they don't.
So, but the others do.
Okay.
And to be blunt, we don't want to be responsible for procurement errors when none of us are trained in procurement, so.
My only comment to that, understood, totally understand that point, and would feel the same way if I were in your shoes, my suggestion, I guess, would be, is it not possible that when that time comes, that that committee, or the Board of Health, or whomever, would work with the chief procurement officer on that? You know, I'm sure I'm not going to volunteer you, but I think.
Oh, absolutely. Oh, no, no, and I haven't, it's been in.
We have ongoing discussions.
Yeah, it's been a regular discussion about this, so I'm well aware where we are and what the market is, and all of that. So I just, if I could add one really quick thing, you'll notice a $6,000 difference between the, the Board of Health's initial recommendation and my recommendation, and I just want to point out, that's in 5294, it has hazmat disposal. We do have special town meeting funding for one, for one hazmat disposal, to be able to have one hazmat disposal already. So initially, the Board of Health, I believe, was seeking, was seeking two in one year, however, we already have funding for one, so that's why we dropped it back down to 60.
Well, go ahead.
No, we only want to have one a year.
Yep.
But because we didn't get it funded last year in the budget at the spring, we had to go to Fall Town Meeting for the special article, and by the time we got the money, all the places are already booked for this entire year.
Yes.
So that's why we're trying to get enough money in the budget so we can book one for next year. We're still trying to work one this year, but they're all sold out, you know, they're all booked, so, so we only want to have one.
This funding would allow for one hazmat rather than two.
It was always one. It's about, it's over $10,000 to do one hazardous day.
Two years ago, it was $3,400.
However, if you can get one, then DEP will give you grant money to have a second one, but you've got to get your first one under your belt, but we can't get there until we can get money in the budget in order to do it, so.
Yeah, well, and we're saying the same thing, because the original request was $22,000, but we're bringing it down so we can, we can guarantee, so we can guarantee that we, so we can guarantee that we have one with a special town meeting funding, and then another one with a budget funding that would be in this budget.
So that 22,000, out of that, like 12,000 is for the hazardous waste day, the rest of it is to dispose of our tires, our light bulbs, our propane tanks, the televisions, all that kind of stuff. So that's, it's, it's not just hazardous waste day, it's all included in the hazardous waste line, so.
So my question is that the money that we approved in November?
Yes.
We don't, not that we lose the money, but we can carry that over to the next fiscal year, and how much, do we know how much that was?
$10,000.
$10,000, and that's not enough for?
$1,000 something.
No, no, we're carrying it over from the special article.
The special article. It should be, yes.
Yeah, it was $10,000.
It's not on here.
Selectman Hull?
Hazardous materials, do you charge, hazardous materials, do you charge people to dispose of them? How does that reflect in this budget?
We try to break even. We wanted to try a revolving fund at one time, which didn't fly. Money taken in at the transfer station would be used for that particular purpose, but we, there was some objection, and I can't recall from where, but it was kind of shot down that we do the revolving fund. It plays in where it offsets the cost. We try to break even. The amount we charge is right in line with what other towns charge.
Yep.
Has the Board of Health thought of increasing those fees?
We just increased some, we added some that we didn't have, but it needs to be totally looked at. I would agree with that comment.
So that would be self-sufficient?
I'm not sure whatever would be self-sufficient.
See, to pass it off to all the taxpayers.
You don't want, I'm sorry.
To pass it off to all the taxpayers is really unfair.
Just like pay-as-you-throw, right?
Well, that's a little different than hazardous materials, because not everyone.
Well, what ends up happening, if you're going to charge too much, your hazardous material is going to end up on the side of the road.
Yep.
Like I see mattresses now, and very soon, after DR has their mattress sale, you're probably going to see a lot of mattresses on the side of the road. I just tell you the way it is in past history, Tom Ferry vouched for that. You see things all over the road other than general litter that people don't want to pay the fee and throw it out, but, yeah, we have reviewed it. Last time was a couple of months back, but it was a couple of guys on the board that did run transfer stations, and it was pretty much in line with what other towns are charging, so we don't want to, you know, yes, it ends up coming out of your taxes, and I get what you're saying, but it's like paying taxes for the school. People say, I don't have children in school, and whatever else you want to pick. I mean, everyone, this is, this is a town united, I feel, and we're all in this together, and when the North Dayton sewer problem arose many years ago, and town sewage had to be put in North Dayton Village, the whole town paid for it. You know, what are you going to do? You could have your own little town up in North Dayton, or your own little town in South Dayton. I mean, you know, there's, there's pros and cons to everything, and you know, remember the old saying, you, how did that go? You can make some of the people happy some of the time, but not all of the people all of the time. So that's what we try to do. We try to balance what we're charging and doing in the best interest of the town of Dayton, not any one group of people, so, anyway.
So my question is probably for Mr. Pillings. You've got $10,000 already for the hazardous waste. How much additional, if the $16,000 or the 22, is it $22,000, would that cover hazardous waste day plus getting rid of tires and TVs, and, so what is it you need in addition to the $10,000?
So getting rid of all the hazardous materials we have, which, yes, if somebody brings in a tire, we charge enough to cover the disposal of the tire. It's generally the case. It costs about $10,000 to get rid of everything we have, although I will say, last year, we had a lot of TVs dropped off that we weren't anticipating, because everybody was home and they decided to upgrade their TVs, so we went high in that. But it's usually about $10,000 to get rid of everything that we've got. So to have the household hazardous waste day, you need another $10,000 on top of that, which is why we got the special article. But like you said, two years ago, it was $10,400, so we need more than $10,000 to do this, so.
Is there any other questions?
No.
I will entertain a motion.
So moved?
An inten, uh, motion to approve this budget, but we need to decide whether we're going to go with the town administrator's recommendation or the Board of Health's recommendation on waste collection and disposal.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that the Board of Selectmen accept the town administrator's recommendation for account number 433 Waste Collection and Disposal, a total of $847,266.66.
I will step down and second that motion. Is there any further discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote. Selectman Hull?
Aye.
And Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campuchico is an aye. The next item is, budget item is 510. I want to ask Selectman Hull to take over for a minute while I do something.
Regarding the police budget, I'm not.
Yeah, the only, unless you have other questions, I'm just going to explain 5106 and account 510. That increase is due to an increase in hours and the, a 2.5% increase, which is standard in this year's clerical contract. Other than that, I believe everything's the same.
Does this budget reflect any grants?
Any what?
Grants, income from grants?
Grants, no. Not that I know of, no.
Well, this is only expenditures anyway, there's no income yet, so.
Right, but in figuring your expenditures, does this reflect any income that you had through grants?
Are we talking this particular account?
Yeah.
Or in general?
In, well.
Well, I don't believe a grant would be.
When, when you write a grant, there's usually a place, Dr. Z, correct me if I'm wrong, there's usually a place for grant administration, which would be the person who wrote the grant, or the person who oversees the grant, or, you know, administers.
I've never seen a grant for personnel expenses. Grants are, in my mind, for stuff. You know, this has been our budget for years.
You do get grants for like, I'll give you an example, I know there's one that we get for, that you get, I should say, for like recycling, but like, that wouldn't be reflected in the budget, in the sense that your budget is like, exactly, the expenses.
That's what I think I'm saying.
But I think what you're saying is like, if we were to get a grant, I think it's like $4,600 for recycling, are you asking like, do they then go to what that's for in the budget and then reduce that by that grant cost?
Correct, yes.
Is that what you're saying?
Yes, yes.
Well, yeah, we've used that grant, we've been receiving, although small, we've used it to repair roll-offs, we've used it for various other things, but we don't have a lot of access to grants that, and for the last couple of years, it's been. been probably pretty difficult to be writing them, but we do get small ones to, to our work in the recycling process and waste disposal. But as far, if it's particular to this account, no, there would be no grant, I don't believe that could be applicable to this.
Thank you.
Yes, Selectman Hull, Dr. Z?
What is the difference, I can't figure out where the difference is between the town administrator's recommendation and the departmental request, maybe I'm
The difference is fifty-one oh five. There's nothing there because that is the thirty-eight hundred dollars we merged in with the ACO, that's the difference.
Thank you.
So I couldn't hear, excuse me, Mr. Mullin. So town, the animal inspector now reports to the police department?
So there is a job description that is for consideration by the board later in the meeting.
The only reason I question that
Yep.
Is because it seems to be a lot of, I mean, I'm happy that's where it may go. Certainly that's, not that it's a lot of work because she only, we don't get to see the bond books that's generated. However, I would seem to think that something like the avian flu would be something the Board of Health would want to know about.
Yes.
So she's reporting to the police department?
No, no, in the job description, in the, in the proposed updated job description, which is also in the packet, like you, you know, like as written, the ACO animal inspector would report to the chief of police, the board of health, and in some cases, the town clerk. So we did leave that there because we understand, so the dichotomy of issues there, and we wanted to make sure that was understood.
I wish I had seen a copy, then I wouldn't be asking these questions. A little bit of discussion in advance would have been probably good.
Well, that's on the agenda and we skipped
It is.
It was the, that was that one item.
I mean, not, not this evening. A day or two ago would have been helpful.
With this agenda, as well as that's been posted, I believe, right?
So yeah, we left all the functions there where they're supposed to be. Nothing is changing practically, other than we're proposing an increase in the salary and merging the fifty-one oh five with the two ninety-two in order to really fund the salary. That's all we're seeking to do.
I get that.
So organizationally, the change that was made, was made a few years back when Assessor Goulart was on the board with myself and Selectman, Chairman Pacheco, Selectman Pacheco at the time. And the change was that ACO, the Animal Control Officer functions would be under the police department and the animal inspector, state inspection functions, like the barn inspections that you're referring to, would remain under the Board of Health. And that's what I'm still going to support. So in my mind, we didn't need to have a discussion because I, nothing was going to change.
Well, nobody consulted us about the change of the ACO to police department either, a year and a half ago. My point is, we've been criticized for not communicating. Now, here's the same situation. So I'm just trying to make my point that we're not as bad as we're made out to seem Communication is important, no matter what it is, I think you would agree with that, We all set with five-nineteen?
Five-ten? Is it five-ten?
Five-ten, there was
Five-ten, I'm sorry.
There wasn't a, was there a vote, I'm sorry?
There wasn't, not yet.
No.
There's been no motion yet, right? I know I was
I didn't want to be presumptuous, but if you're entertaining motions
I will entertain a motion.
I entertain, I entertain. I motion that the Board of Selectmen recommend for account five-ten, the amount of eighty, seventy-eight thousand, four hundred thirty-six dollars and forty cents.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote. Selectman Hull?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
Campuchico is an aye. The next item, budget item is five-nineteen, Board of Health Administration.
The top half, fifty-one oh one through fifty-one fifty-six is personnel expenses and some clothing allowance. Two and a half percent was applied to salaries across the board. The expenses on the bottom from fifty-one fifty-one through fifty-seven thirty are level funded.
So I've noticed in the past, and it's, it's been a few years that we have not given an increase for the stipends for different boards, and it's maybe three or four years that we've been doing that.
This will be the third year.
This is the third year. So I am not, myself, I can't speak for the board, but I'm not opposed to giving an increase in stipends for all boards and all committees. And the reason why I say that is that I don't believe anybody joins any of these boards or any committees or any of us are here because we get paid money. However, I think we ought to show some appreciation to those people that volunteer on these different boards and different committees. It's not a bunch of money, nobody's going to go on vacation based on this. It is an increase, but we have not increased the stipends for a few years now, so I'm not opposed to this. I'm not sure, it should be two and a half percent. I thought we're going, I thought we'd give everybody a two percent, but I'm open to a conversation about this. What's on this budget is a two and a half percent increase in the stipends. So any discussion? Selectman Hull?
I'm very happy to hear this because I have received several calls from members of various boards looking for an increase. And I think from feedback that I got, that it would make it even harder than what it is right now to get people to stay on boards or to join boards if they didn't get a raise as soon as possible. In putting together an anticipated budget, Mr. Mullin, obviously you have to make projections of what you need to safely run this town. And in working, in negotiating with personnel unions, on average, on average, what number were you working with? Two percent or two and a half, on average? I mean, obviously something
So I don't want, so I just want to be careful, we're embargaining with a few of our units right now, so I don't, yeah, so like I just want to be careful to not say something that reflects our position with the unions. So I'm trying to think how to say it, frankly, but
Yeah, so I'm not, when I talked about this, I was thinking two percent myself across the board.
Okay.
Let me just clarify that, with the exception of the Board of Selectmen, I'm not asking that we get an increase in our stipends.
I totally agree with you.
Dr. Z?
I just think you have to, if, it can't just be a decision made for the Board of Health, it has to affect
No, as we go
Whatever the decision is.
We've already approved some, or recommended some budgets without the two percent increase in
We have to go back to those.
We may have to go back to those. But we have others, other
Yeah.
Things, budgets that we're going to be discussing tonight that we can't address tonight for those. We've already approved the Board, Board of Selectmen's budget without any increase. I would ask that, you know, we know what we were getting into.
That's right. I totally
And talking about working minimum wage, we work minimum wage, but we, but we knew that.
Two cents an hour.
But we, but we knew that, right?
Correct.
And as Mrs. Goulart told me when I, I think at my first meeting, is she still here?
Yeah, she's still here. You put her to sleep though.
It's twenty-four seven and, and that's, as we all know, that's what it is, right?
Yes.
But I think for me to, I will support it, but it's not just an appreciation thing. We do appreciate everyone that volunteers. For me, it's more like I see volunteers using their own printers to print stuff for town meetings. I see them driving all around town to do different things, going to different meetings, et cetera. So I think it's warranted and I'll support it. But there's a real reason. People are using their own materials to keep their committees, commissions, and boards going, so I understand that and I'm happy to support it.
I still think it's, it's a form of appreciation when we don't give them that increase. When I joined the ZBA in two thousand, twenty-two years ago, we didn't get any stipend. And it was like three or four, five years down the road, they started giving us a stipend because we started doing forty Bs.
Now you're hooked.
Hooked, but at the beginning, we have our meeting once a month and we knew what we were getting into, we knew we weren't going to get a stipend. Then we got into forty Bs and that, that means a lot more meetings. I did not support it at the annual town meeting for a stipend for the ZBA, but it was, it passed. But a lot more boards now are getting some kind of a stipend, so I think, I know it's a tight budget, I get all of that, but I think we have to just show our appreciation to all the volunteers. You know, we're asking people to volunteer their time, people got families, they got all sorts, you know, they work and they get all sorts of, I don't know why this keeps coming up on my computer here. We get all these different, they get all these different responsibilities, but being on, to volunteer, to be on a commission or a committee says a lot about the person who wants to volunteer. So I think, I'm leaning towards two percent, but I would not lose sleep over two and a half percent increase, so.
The only thing that I'd like to see is that we be consistent
Right.
All the way across the board.
That's my hope.
I agree.
Not picking winners and losers.
Yeah.
It's everybody.
I feel more comfortable with two percent at this point in time. Keeping in mind, you know, we get feedback from the public. We know that we're in tough economic times and the one thing that's very important to understand, that feedback from the public, that's feedback from the people who are paying the freight. They are the taxpayers. So at this point in time, I would support a two percent increase rather than a two and a half.
Right, and this is going to go before the FinCom, obviously, our recommendation, so we'll listen to them. And the, as you know, the public, the residents have the final say in it, so if they don't support it, but I would hope that they, we support it because we're supporting it, but anyway.
That's wishful thinking.
Well, we'll do what we've got to do.
Optimism.
We get paid the big bucks to make these decisions, a recommendation, so. Mr. Pines?
Well, I appreciate what you're doing for all the boards across the board and I think they'll also appreciate it. You made my day, I went from fifty-three cents an hour to fifty-four cents an hour.
There you go. Get that, get an extra cup of coffee.
That's not enough. Like your board, this board is twenty-four seven. I've been out in the middle of the night before, we all have.
Yep.
That comes out to eight thousand eight hundred and twenty hours annually. Our salary, our stipend is forty-six fifty. I can live with two percent. I will be bringing this to our meeting to see if we want to move forward regardless of what your recommendation is to town meeting. We're only talking at two and a half percent, a hundred and sixteen dollars and twenty-five cents apiece, that's a year. We've been reduced, you know the history of this board and what's happened, we've been reduced since day one. We're just trying to get back to the forty-nine hundred that we, the voters gave us in the fall, I think of twenty-seventeen or twenty-eighteen, I don't know, that long ago. So now it goes from one sixteen, twenty-five to ninety-three dollars. So if we stayed at two and a half, this board, I only say that because we're twenty-four seven. Most boards are not. The only other board that I know that is, has a lot of availability would be the planning board, who is, could be seven days a week to go out and look at things. But then I called in the middle of the night to go out. So the total amount is three hundred forty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents. And I get your continuity argument, and if I was in your shoes, I'd do the same thing. Because I like to sit on both sides and know where everybody's coming from. And
Appreciate that.
I'm not going to be here, so it doesn't mean a whole lot to me, but I just to let you know, if the board as a group decides, you know, that I'm not happy with the recommendation, I don't see why they wouldn't be, but it's better than nothing. So that's all I got to say.
So I, my personal feeling is that I would support two percent across the board. Obviously, we'll have to revisit some of these budgets, we're going to address some others tonight, but I would go for the two percent. I think it may impact the budget roughly
Yes.
Five to six thousand dollars a year.
If that, Mr. Chairman, it's, it's a very limited amount.
Right.
And we're still, we'd still be within that forty-something thousand dollar difference, two. Yep, we would be.
Yeah.
With all, with a couple increases. Yes, we would be.
Okay.
We're hitting it close enough to that mark though.
No, I get it, but I do think it's important to show the appreciation to those people that volunteer in our community to be on a commission or committee, whether it's a meeting once a month or it's a meeting
Bless you.
You know, we've, we've had three Selectmen meetings this month, we may have another one next week, I haven't let you guys know that yet, but we may have another meeting next week. But we all have other meetings. I've got four meetings tomorrow, starting
I'm sorry, I didn't plan it that way.
At seven in the morning, well, you picked
I did not plan it that way.
So, but that, we know that, we knew that coming into it, so, but there are other boards, as the Board of Health and you mentioned the planning board that has a lot of meetings and everything else. I am not, I would not support an increase for the Board of Selectmen. I wouldn't support a two percent increase in all the other committees and boards that already have a stipend, so. So what would the, what would the budget end up being if we increase it two percent then?
Yep, so I, so with my town administrative recommendations, I did it going because I had to do the math. So if the board wanted to do a two percent on the Board of Health members, so it would change to a total bottom line of seventy-nine thousand, seven hundred and six dollars for the personnel expense budget in my, oh, in five-nineteen.
That would also be an increase in, you have the chairman separate?
Yep, the chairman and the two members.
Chairman and two members, that's a total, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
So what is that figure again, please, Mike?
So the bottom line would be seventy-nine thousand, seven hundred and six dollars.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Selectman Hull?
I'm confused, I'm looking at a balance sheet that says two-point-five percent with a total on the bottom, TA recommendation of seventy-nine thousand, four hundred and twenty-seven dollars.
Yes.
We just reduced it to two percent and I got a number of seventy-nine thousand, seven hundred
That's government math, Selectman Hull.
So no, I promise you, I do know how to do math. So the two-point, so the difference in the two-point, so the two-point-five percent that you see right there?
Mm-hmm.
That is the increase on the departmental request. But my recommendation is not the departmental request and nor would it, and nor would it work out to, at the two and a half percent because that is not, as I just heard, the will of the board. So the, so for the, the salary for the chairman, so the forty-seven sixty-six, so the forty-seven sixty-six, that represents a two and a half percent increase over the prior year salary, but the board doesn't want to do a two and a half percent increase over the prior year salary. So, so what I did is I went back to the, the FY twenty-two, I want to ask, there's someone in our Zoom waiting room with the jack of all trades here, the forty-six fifty times one point oh, times one point oh two, and I came up with the forty-seven forty-three. So that is the two percent. And I did the same exact thing for fifty-one oh two, which is And I did the same exact thing for fifty-one oh two, which is the, what else? The ninety-three hundred dollars, so for the two members.
Ninety-three dollars.
Ninety-three hundred dollars times one point oh two, ninety-three hundred times one point oh two, and you should come out in, and we should have come out in ninety-four eighty-six. So that is a two percent increase on the prior year salary. So that's, so I updated those in real time, so you have that information to vote on.
Mr. Hall, we dropped, we had recommended two and a half percent for the nurse. He took that out, so that went to zero percent. That's why the total for the whole line is not what you're expecting.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And your recommendation?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, that was that, too.
Thank you.
So for my clarification, I know it's like watching paint dry or grass grow, but we're gonna do this. So we're not recommending an increase in the salary for the town nurse, is that?
So the public health, so the public health, the public health nurse funding is, so it, so like, is, so the public health nurse funding is not a salary rate. So it, so it's amount of funding that we make available for public health nurse services. So and up until, so and up until this year, we funded that at, at, so thirteen hundred dollars. No, I'm sorry. So there was some movement in our, in our lines, but I want one fifty, and we funded it at about three thousand dollars per year. And we increased it to, and we increased it to eight thousand dollars per year at special town meeting. So the, so the, so the funding is not salary, that's money we make available to fund a per team rate.
I see, okay. Just, Selectman Hall.
Again, are there grant monies available?
Yes. So when we were just awarded a grant with the Town of Dayton along with five, five, so five other communities, it's a three hundred thousand dollar grant. So the, so the first round of it is for three years with a very strong possibility that it will continue further in the future. So, but that, so, but that grant funding will supplement our existing services. So we can't take away, so we can't, so we can't take away the services we offer now. So we, so we have to maintain them. So in the grant, and the grant funding that we just were awarded will allow us, we like to build on and supplement them.
Okay. With that in mind, we're talking about the town nurse?
Mm-hmm.
Would that involve administering any administrative work of the grant? Or would that just be services provided?
That will be services provided, the fiscal agent and the grant administrators through the Town of North Attleboro.
Oh, okay. So those services rendered?
Yes.
Would supplement the eight thousand?
Yes, yes. But we have to leave the eight thousand dollars in place. We can't decrease in order to replace.
Right, but that eight thousand dollars has specific duties. So any grant work would be up and above that?
Yes, but we'd have to, it would also depend on how the grant administration has rolled out as well. So when just, and we're at the early stages of that. So, but there are some intricacies that we're gonna, so, so that we're going to be working out because what we have is a very effective public nurse here and we want to continue to, oh, you know, actually grow the role that, oh, you know, that we have here, so we have a value here in Dayton.
The funding of that grant on a per hourly basis for the work, is it equivalent to what the nurse, town nurse currently gets?
We, the grant, the grant implementation, we haven't got there yet in terms of the grant applic, the grant implementation as of yet.
I have a question.
Yep, Dr. Z.
I thought when we had that discussion that you had said that it wouldn't, like, replace any of the work or duties that, like, the health agent or the public health nurse currently do. So I'm trying to ascertain how exactly the grant would supplement or offset what's already being done.
So.
Because I don't want to take anything away from anyone. I think everyone does a good job, so now I feel like I'm getting confused about what the purpose of the grant is.
So, so the grant, so the purposes of, the purpose of the grant is the health agent and the public health nurse in particular, they, so they, so they have a very specific, so they have a very specific job with a specific workload. So there are times throughout the year, so there are times, there are times throughout the year, however, that their workload does not actually allow them to get everything they have to get done. So what this grant would do is fund supplemental inspection, so in epidemiology, oh, you know, and how, and housing inspection services, so, so those services are available to help. So, so those services and funding for those services and the personnel for those services would be available to help supplement and come into help if needed.
I have more questions, but I'll let it go.
Okay. Okay, so I, if there's no other questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Well, we, we need a bottom line, the final.
I thought you, you gave us the figure.
Seventy-nine thousand?
Thousand, seven hundred and six dollars.
Even?
Seven hundred and six?
Seven hundred and six dollars, yep.
Actually, may I ask one more question? Because I really need to know the answer before I vote. So this scenario would.
Don't wait for me to answer that, whether you can ask another question.
No, I am. There wouldn't be a scenario where we would say, or it would happen that, okay, no, we're not going to have the public health nurse do this. We're going to have this, okay.
No, no, not at all. I want to be very clear about that, no. No, I wouldn't, yeah, that is not, that would never fly with me, nor I think a lot of people here, so.
Take your answer. Okay, I'm satisfied.
Okay. I will now entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we recommend for account five nineteen, the amount of seventy-nine thousand, seven hundred and six dollars.
Is there a second? Is there any further discussion on this? If not, I'll call for a vote. Selectman Hall?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campuchico is an aye. Mr. Pius.
I just, while I'm up here, I wanted to make sure that you've covered, and I believe you might have done this on the sixteenth, account one five five, data processing fees of two thousand.
We've covered that, yeah.
Covered.
That whole budget, yes.
How about emergency preparedness? Did the chief go over that?
That is tonight.
That's tonight?
Yes.
It's tonight also?
Data processing was, I think, last week or the week before.
Well, since the emergency preparedness falls under the Board of Health, you want to do it now? It's level funded. We just moved some money around.
Are you trying to get out of here, Tom?
No, I'm waiting for the job description, I mean, the job posting, in case any questions come up.
So I will entertain a motion that we take out of order, count number on the budget, on the new business agenda item ten, account number two ninety-nine, emergency preparedness.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote. Selectman Hall?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campuchico is an aye.
The only thing we, we did that happened, the, the committee, we approved moving twenty-five hundred out of something and put it into something else, I can't see it.
Yeah, you took twenty-five hundred.
Came from communications and.
And you put it in dues and subscriptions.
Yep.
Budget was level funded. We moved twenty-five hundred from communications to dues and subscriptions for the code red annual fee.
How much is the code red annual fee?
Twenty-five hundred.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any questions?
No.
I don't have any.
If not, I'll call for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the Board of Selectmen support the recommendation for account number two ninety-nine, emergency preparedness for the sum of eight thousand, five hundred dollars.
Just for the record, this is level funding.
Second.
Second. Any discussion?
I do have one question. In future years, do we anticipate an increase to the fee for code red?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch it.
Well, there, do we anticipate, like, for example, sometimes with contracts, things go up in future years? Or will it, do we anticipate it to be?
Do you know that? Todd?
Yeah, so part of the deal with them, because it's a, it was a Bristol County thing and all that, is that twenty-five hundred is locked in forever.
Awesome, thank you, sir.
I'll call for a vote. Selectman Hall?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campuchico is an aye. The next agenda item is the Town Administrator's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me pull up those notes. Still, I just want to give the board, and the public and our residents, an update on, on the town hall ramp reconstruction process and project, together with Superintendent Ferry and Building Commissioner Aguirre. I'm pleased to report that the reconstruction of the front town hall ramp into a new accessible pathway will begin Monday morning. That is Monday, March twenty-fifth.
Twenty-eighth, twenty-eighth.
Oh, my God, yes, twenty-eighth, sorry about that.
You would have been there.
Probably would have. So, yes, so that will begin on Monday, March twenty-eighth. Our access to the upper level, like of the town hall, may be more challenging. So for the week of the twenty-eighth and the following week thereafter as well, due to the upper, due to, due to the upper parking lot being closed as a staging area for the, the ramp and pathway reconstruction. So like included in the packet, you'll see actually like a memo that we sent out to all town hall, I mean, all town employees yesterday. I'm just, I'm gonna stop showing.
Let me, you want me to read, can I read that to the public and?
Yeah, and I can bring that up as well. It's just I had two windows.
This is from Town Administrator, stated March twenty-second. Together with Superintendent Tom Ferry and Building Commissioner James Aguirre, I write today to share the upcoming schedule for the town hall front entrance ramp to be reconstructed into an accessible pathway. Town hall parking will be impacted for both. Oh, my, my email keeps coming. For both residents and employees during the construction process, and we are asking for your help as we move forward. We expect the town contractor, L A L Construction Company, to mobilize and be on site for work to begin on March twenty-eight, twenty twenty-two. The work is expected to take up to two weeks with town hall's upper level parking area to be used as a staging area. The upper and lower level parking areas will not be able to be assessed for employees parking between March twenty-eighth to April eighth. We are reserving the lower level town hall parking for residents and visitors during this time. As a result, we respectfully ask that all town hall and library employees park in the parking lot located on the far side of the temp, the north side of the library module, the former Briggs House property, for this very limited time. This request includes employees who typically park in the lower level parking area in order to accommodate residents and visitors' parks for this construction period. Accessibility of town hall, accessibility of town hall upper level, I'm afraid if I get rid of my email, I'm gonna lose everything. The accessibility of town hall upper level will be impacted during the reconstruction. Every effort will be made to assist employees, residents, and visitors who need temporary accommodations while this work is ongoing. Please do not hesitate to contact the Office of the Board of Selectmen, Town Administrator, if you have any questions and/or concerns. We appreciate your understanding, patience, and cooperation in advance as we work to make these important and necessary improvements.
So that's my update. I couldn't have said it any better myself, so thank you.
You actually did say that, sorry. Okay, so the next agenda item is Selectmen's reports, and I believe, Selectman Hall, you have a report.
I have one as well.
I'll be brief. I attended the Park and Recreation meeting earlier this week. They have a lot going on. Upgrades in regards to maintenance of playgrounds, slides, looking for safety issues. The one event that we're all aware of, that they are planning to once again have the strawberry, I'm sorry, the firecracker festival. The one event that they have coming up really soon is April ninth, beginning at noon, at the Sprat Field behind town hall, will be the annual Easter egg hunt. And I, Mr. Smith asked if I would do a shout-out to Arujo Farms for graciously donating all the eggs for the Easter egg hunt. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I just wanted to report on, sort of in relationship to what the Town Administrator reported, with some of the projects that are going on as a result of the MOD grant that we were awarded recently. The Town Administrator, myself, Mrs. Brady, the ADA Coordinator Jonathan Gale, Parks and Recreation Commissioner Kevin Smith, have all been involved in different website accessibility meetings. This actually, I don't want to reveal like too much, but this, because a lot, there's a lot of moving parts. But that, basically what I wanted to say was, we have basically expanded our search to include other vendors and just looking at different live demos and different accessibility features that the different vendors, although there's really not that many of them, offer. So things have been proceeding well. We're making a lot of progress. I think we have an idea of where we think we might move forward and with whom. So I will report as things develop and we have more concrete results. But I think I can say that ADA Coordinator Gale seems to be pleased with some of the different demos that have been done. So I think it looks very promising.
Thank you. Thank you both for your reports. There is no old business. On the new business, review, discuss, and act on the recommendation to appoint Annabella Powell as Executive Director, Counsel on Aging. I saw you walking out, you're coming back in.
Yeah, don't leave yet.
Sorry about that, you had to wait. So I'll read the letter. This is from our Town Administrator, Mike Mullin, dated March twenty-third. On behalf of Chairman Ferry and the Counsel on Aging Board of Directors, and we have one of our members here, Jeff Alley, I write, I write today to share the board's unanimous decision to recommend Annabella Powell to the Board of Selectmen for appointment as Director, next, Director's Next Counsel on Aging Executive Director. The recommendation comes after a very vigorous search and interview process where twelve applicants were screened, five were interviewed by the screening committee, and four were interviewed by the Board of Directors. We were extremely fortunate to have a large number of very qualified candidates to consider for this important position. The four finalists interviewed by the Board of Directors were extremely well-qualified. Of all the interviews, interview processes, of which I have been part of here in Dayton during the last year, this process was without a doubt the most difficult due to the strength each of the finalists brought to the table. I have enclosed Mrs. Powell's application materials as you review her recommendation for appointment. With the board's decision, we can then move forward with, with the negotiations of a potential employment agreement with Mrs. Powell. We're excited to move along with this process. I truly thank the Counsel on Aging Board of Directors, especially Mr. Alley and Mr. Diaruda for their work in serving as members would be in the screening process. Yes, Selectman Hall.
Let's, Dr. Z has any comment?
I didn't have any questions. I'll have comments, I'll wait.
I, I would like, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Annabella Powell as the new Executive Director for the Counsel on Aging.
Second.
Just a second. Under discussion, I would, I would like to, Ms. Powell, to come up here, if you don't mind.
I was relaxed, now my heart is pounding.
This is our job to make you nervous.
Yeah.
We should have a spotlight.
No, no.
So anyway, I appreciate your application and appreciate the, the fact that the Board of Directors and the Counsel on Aging are recommending you. As you know, you have big shoes to fill.
Yes, I do.
And we had somebody there prior to you that has been there for many years. What do you anticipate for changes? Or you have any ideas as what you would, if, I assume you're going to be approved, for the future, for primetime, for example?
Well, first I'd like to, first I'd like to thank the board. I'd also like to thank Mr. Mullin and the Counsel on Aging Board members. and also my associates and all the townspeople who encouraged me and placed their confidence in me. I'm honored for the opportunity to serve as the next Director of the Counsel on Aging. I'm very much looking forward to working together with the various town departments, and I assure you that I will do my best for the Town of Dayton and the elderly population of the community. Now, in regards to primetime, I have various different plans, and tomorrow, I'm actually sitting down with Sheila tomorrow, and we're gonna talk about how can we open it? Whether it's gonna be two to three days a week, we have been working on various plans. And I did put a call into the town accountant. I need to know exactly what it is, the funding that's available there to run the program, and run numbers to see how we can, how much money can we actually bring, and then pay in the staff. So, it's really, there's a lot of kinks that need to be worked out, and I'm gung-ho to do so, so.
Does the Board have any questions for Ms. Powell?
I'd say to have your board.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
You have a comment?
Yes. I'll be brief and not emotional. What I wanted to say was, I really was happy to see that you had applied. I wasn't sure if you would. I didn't reach out to you. I just was hoping that someone who is knowledgeable about the operation at primetime, but also Counsel on Aging, would be interested in applying. I know you have years of experience. I know we've worked together on different things when Mrs. Souza was the Executive Director. And I know you have a lot to offer, so I just wanted to let you know personally, thank you. I think that it's gonna make a world of difference for the residents that there's a familiar face there. I'm sure you have those relationships with the clients and the vendors and the employees. So, I have full faith and confidence, and I just wanted to thank you.
Thank you very much, and I did not take this decision very lightly. I had to really think about it, because when I decide to do anything, I give it my whole heart. And I wanted to make sure that I was willing to do that. So, and I did. I decided it was at the last, it was almost at the last minute. But I'm glad that I did, and I, I'm looking forward to serving the elders of the town. Thank you.
If there's no other questions, I'll call for a vote. Did we already make a motion?
No.
We had a motion in a second.
Yeah. Selectmen Hall?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campuchinos, an aye. So, congratulations.
Thank you very much, thank you, thank you.
So, the next agenda item is review, discuss, and act on recommendations to appoint Michael Mullin to the Insurance Board. This is a letter, a memo from Mary Hathaway.
Did someone volunteer him?
I would like to recommend that you appoint Mike Mullin to the Insurance Advisory Board so he can attend the SMHG meetings concerning the Town Health Insurance. Since I am retiring, we need someone to represent the town at these meetings. Most towns have their Town Administrator as the voting Board member, and the alternate is the Treasurer. Thank you for your consideration in this matter, as from Treasurer Collector Mary Hathaway.
If you're entertaining motions, I think in relationship or in response to Mrs. Hathaway's recommendation or suggestion, I think it's more than fitting to have our Town Administrator, who is also the Administrator of Insurance, that's one of their titles, to have them be in these meetings. But I also wanted to let you know that I do this for a living. If you ever have any questions, happy to, happy to help, okay? Just as a friend.
And thank you for the additional responsibility.
Mr. Chairman, is there a second?
Yes, second.
Any further discussion?
None.
If not, I'll call for a vote. Selectmen Hall?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campuchinos, an aye also. The next agenda item is the review, discuss, and act on the recommendations. Review, discuss, and act on Animal Control Officer's job description. As you know, it's in our packet. Hope everybody's had an opportunity to review.
Yes.
But that, there's been some slight changes in, in it. I believe what's highlighted in red is the changes. Is there any questions?
I do have a question.
Yep.
If I may.
Yep.
And it's for the Town Administrator. Has this job description, or should I say, when, when it was, when the changes were being made, was that in consultation with someone from the Health Department?
Not as of yet, how I anticipated this, and we, we just actually, I just actually, between yesterday and today, together with the Police Department, we, we came up with the proposed changes based, oh, you know, as one thing is part of a whole bunch of things happening right now. So, this is really like a first draft for feedback and review. And I did expect really to, to share it around after this, as we go forward. So, if, yeah, yeah, so if there's any department, if, or if the Board of Health does have feedback as well, we want to have that included. But, you know, like essentially, what, what we tried to do is really blend together the two job descriptions that really already exist and, oh, you know, include the same exact appointing authority, the nominating authority, like in the reporting authority that actually exists now. So, like, we're not really seeking to change anything in terms of work duties or responsibilities. Just really like update the job description into one. To that end, to that end, you can, like, actually, you still see the fact that the, the animal, the animal inspector would, I'll, I'll still be appointed, like, in report to the Board of Health. We also integrated, like, into one job description, the, the areas from the animal inspector job description that really need to be included in, like, in a combined, in a combined description. So, for example, at the bottom of the first page, you can see, like, where we, you know, where we do highlight the fact that we want our, our ACO animal inspector to have experience with domesticated livestock. We als, we also pull language out of the animal inspector job description, oh, dealing with wildlife, so like in the reporting, like, in the epidemiology that goes through the Division of Fisheries and Wildlife, and also the epidemiology, epidemiology that goes to the state rabies laboratory as well. So, we, so we tried to make everything all-encompassing there. Again, and you can see where we, we also wanted to really emphasize and take from the animal inspector job description the fact that the animal inspector must be nominated by the Board of Health and appointed by D.A.R. in the, in the Selectmen as well. So, everything else is really, oh, you know, the language is as, like, essentially, as they exist between the two job descriptions. There's a lot of very similar and mirror language that, that both job descriptions have in there. Like, and we just, and we just really reflected that. You can see in the reporting, to the same end I just mentioned, that we, we included the fact that the animal inspector is responsible for bond inspections. That's extremely important, as we know. Like, we went through and, in any instance, we mentioned ACO. We, like, we mentioned, we mentioned the combined position, because that's essentially what it is. And all, and all the language at the, towards the end of the job description, this is the, this is the language, and these are requirements that are already spelled out in both, in both descriptions.
Perfect.
I would like to ask Mr. Pius, is this something you think we should support tonight or vote tonight? Or do you want to have an opportunity to take a look at this? You indicated before that you hadn't seen this before.
I'm pretty well aware of both job descriptions that came out through the state. If they follow state guidelines in job descriptions, which it sounds like they did, I think you can go ahead and act this evening, so.
I have a question.
Right hand is he in?
Oh, I thought you.
Okay.
Yep, I came first, thank you. My only question is under super, so I support this, especially hearing what Chairman Pius has said. My only question is under supervision received. I definitely don't disagree with anything there. My only thing is there's no mention of the Board of Health overseeing the animal inspector duties. It's, it mentions the Board of Selectmen, but in reality.
So, there are three versions. There's one, so the red line version is the updated version. Then there is the.
Oh, yeah, I have an old version, sorry.
Yep.
I don't know, I must have had the first version.
So, it says, works under the general supervision of the Chief of Police and.
That I'm fine with. I'm fine with that version.
Okay.
Selectmen Hall?
What I do have somewhat of a concern. And I, Chief McDonald, Mr. Pius, you can either tell me I'm wrong, or you're not clear yourself. Looking at this document, I do not see where the specific supervisory duties or specific tasks are spelled out in this document. Are both, Mr. Pius and Mr. McDonald, clear of what your supervisory roles are in regards to the animal control officer and animal inspector?
Can I point something out?
Yes.
It does say here, that is a good question, Selectmen Hall.
Because it just says, general supervision is under the police chief
Yep.
and in collaboration with the Board of Health. Okay, if an issue comes up, whose domain is it?
It says, under supervision given, they evaluate a team of volunteers with specific assignments in the performance of shelter tasks and operations. So, it gets a little more specific, but I think the idea would be that the Board of Health, since you appoint the animal inspector, would oversee.
At a minimum, the very top of that job description should state who she reports to for which half of that job. If she's gonna remain reporting to the Board of Health as animal inspector, it should state that. If it's.
I agree with that.
And she reports to the Police Department. I'm sorry, I don't mean to use your third term there, but Stacy, our animal control officer, reports to the Police Department now, so maybe it would be best to put.
Clearly.
That, and that should solve your problem, I think.
Because, I mean, it is a matter of public record that Chief McDonald and Mr. Pius are soon going to be retiring. And I think it needs to be clear to whoever is going to be replacing both of you that they know what their supervisory roles are. I mean, this is.
It probably should state.
Happening in real time. It's not 10 years from now or five years from now.
It probably should state that the animal control officer reports to the three-member Board of Health and not to the health agent.
I agree with that.
Yes, yes, yep.
Mrs. Goulart has a question. Mrs. Goulart?
This is sort of a point of water. Were the two positions combined into one job description because of a change in state law? Under state law, the ACO is appointed by the state based on a recommendation of the Board of Selectmen.
Yes.
The ACO and the animal inspector are not necessarily the same people. I can tell you going back, there was a question earlier about if we ever had a joint arrangement with another town. There was a time when we didn't have an ACO, and the gentleman from Swansea helped out. He was the ACO. Mr. Hoffshire was the animal inspector for years. You can't combine them. They're not the same job. They're very similar. We had this discussion with the last Town Administrator, because she wanted to put them together. In the case of the animal control officer, that's local. The animal inspector and those duties fall under the state veterinarian.
Yes.
I've dealt with Mrs. O'Car, Dr. O'Connor. You don't want to mess this up.
No.
So, you know what I mean. Board of Health makes the recommendation for the animal inspector to the Board of Selectmen.
Yes.
The Board of Selectmen says, we're gonna appoint her. But it's coming up in the spring that you have to notify the state, Dr. O'Connor's office. If for some reason, they decide they're not gonna allow that, you've got to go back and find somebody that will be acceptable. Now, in the past, we've had cooperation and their reappointments. But to put them together, I don't think so.
You mean in the same job description?
That, they truly are two separate positions. And you control you. The town controls the ACO. Technically.
The state controls.
The animal inspector falls under the state veterinarian.
The one thing I was confused about, and it, I don't want to go back to, like, the beginning of the job description, was it does say Dayton Animal Control Officer on the top, and there's not even a mention of the state inspector. So, that's why I was initially just confused.
That makes sense.
About how it got mixed up into the two, as like one in the same job description.
So, yeah, like, I mean, and I, so all of us, I think, I mean, I've only been here for just over a year now. But I mean, I also have developed a relationship with Dr. O'Connor as well. Like, and I'm happy, so like, if the Board wanted to table this as well, like, I'm happy to actually have a conversation with Dr. O'Connor and share this with her. So, like, and in the next few weeks, try to get her feedback, so we have her feedback as part of this process, too.
Selectmen Hall?
I was going to make the motion. Mr. Dr. Z has a question, I believe?
I do, yeah, I.
Well, through the chairman.
Yes, of course. May I?
You have a question?
I do. My question is, if the state inspector roles, duties, et cetera, are covered under Massachusetts general law, then do we just take the state inspector part out of this completely, and now it's just a Dayton animal, a Dayton ACO job description?
Well, why don't you have that conversation? Why don't we table this?
Well, that's what I.
Okay.
Have that conversation, and you come back to us, and you.
Yeah, no, if that's okay with the Board?
Yeah, sure. So, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I just caution you, because we've been through this. When, when the three of you were the Board of Health, you don't want to take options away from the Town of Dayton. Two separate job descriptions works. We know one of them is connected to the state. We know what the role of the town is in that position. The whole thing is, all of the assignments in the town, once that individual for inspector is confirmed, all of the supervision and everything else, as far as the day-to-day operation, falls to the town. All I'm saying to you is, don't combine these two. If the day ever comes, for example, if the, whoever holds the ACO job becomes not able to do the other one, you've got a problem. Now, you've got to separate them. One person can have two job descriptions, and it gives you flexibility. So, all I'm saying is, when she comes in to do an inspection in a town, I'm talking about the doctor now, she is strictly gonna focus on the animal inspection, okay? Go over.
Mr. Chairman, I have actually two motions.
Yep.
My first motion would be to table this for two weeks.
Until the next meeting, until we get an answer.
Yeah, 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 we can get feedback. I can have a discussion with Dr. O'Connor. I mean, we've talked before. She has been helpful, like, and I know she'll, her feedback on this will be valuable.
I'd like to make a motion to table this to.
Second. Any discussion?
We're in the meeting.
Yeah, any discussion? If not, I'll call for votes. Selectmen Hall?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campuchinos, an aye. You see, you have a second motion?
Yes, the second motion, because we need to authorize the Town Administrator to do this. I make a motion that we seek a legal opinion from Town Council on how we should proceed on this matter.
on how we should proceed on this matter.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote, Selectman Hull.
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campa Chico is an aye. So next agenda item is actually to review, discuss, and act on the budget review.
Ooh.
Account number 175, Planning Board. We have a memo or a letter from Kerry Easterday, who is the office manager for the Planning Board. Please be advised on January 19, 2022, the Planning Board voted unanimously to approve the Planning Board's fiscal year 2023 budget as presented, see attached. Please note, following the meeting, CERPA advised the Planning Board that the CERPA Finance Committee voted to increase 2.5% of fiscal year 2023 assessment based on new 2020 population census instead of 2010 population census, resulting in the town of Dayton's proposed fiscal year 2023 budget of $1,633.87. As such, an amendment to the CERPA line will be required. So just to go back to the stipends then, there was a request for 2.5%. If we go to 2%, I believe the chairman will get $45 increase rather than 54.84. And for the other members, instead of $219.51, it will be $180. I did not total that up, so I don't know how that impacts that.
I don't have that.
And also, in this assessment, you don't have the change in the CERPA, or you do have the, has that been adjusted already?
So I did send a.
It should be.
It should be in there.
I see an increase of $239.42 on that, is that correct? Is that the increase that we're talking about?
So the true increase should be in there.
It's a total, yeah, $1,633.97.
Yes.
That is, Kerry, sorry.
So the only change.
It should be in there, yeah.
Only change that I would ask for is.
The town accountant said she updated as soon as she got that memo.
So the only thing I would ask is that the stipend changed to 2% versus 2.5%. Selectman Hull?
As I look at this budget, I don't see anything in here budgeted for legal.
For what, please?
For legal.
Legal.
For legal?
Mm-hmm, I see professional, I see.
Our legal comes out of the professional technical.
Comes out of the professional?
Yes.
Does the board have any other questions regarding this budget?
Um, I don't.
Selectman Hull?
You budgeted last year 15,000 and.
What is that 15,000 for?
You've only spent $545 to date. As I look at this, for legal?
I don't have my to-date at this moment.
This.
I don't think this is up to date. Yeah, I think that's as of January, it's definitely been spent since then. We've had some several legal matters come up.
No, no, I see that, but what I'm looking at here, and what I've heard, they don't match, that's why I was asking.
Yes, and we do have a couple legal matters coming up, so there's definitely going to be some legal expenses coming up. We did have an appeal just filed with one of our decisions. So there's going to be some expenses coming up on that. And we have, I'm sorry, Chairman Pacheco, you started to ask a question on legal, I think, or?
No, I asked the questions on legal.
Or, okay.
You've spent $545.
When I came up with that $45 for the chairman, that was based on, that's not correct. That was based on 2% of what they're recommending, which is not correct. So it's going to be the previous.
So, yeah, it's going to be the 2% of.
On $2,195.16. I don't have that before me then, so.
2,195 times 1.02, so that is going to be 22.38. Actually, 22, 1. Sorry, it's my mouse, so my mouse isn't going to keep working. Oh, my God, I'm going to give up.
You could excel in front of you.
My mouse.
So I got, it's $43.90, so 91 cents, actually.
So that comes out to, the 2% would come out to 22.38.9. And then.
I don't think that that's correct, because we're talking about, the current stipend is $2,195.16. So 1% of that would be $21.95, so 2% is double that, and I've got to figure out $43.90.
Oh, sorry, yeah, 29.73.46. And then. 51.22, 51.22.04 times 1.02, 52.24.48. 52.24. Okay, so those are those numbers, and then.
So I show for the, for the chairman, it's $43.90, and for the other four members, it's $175.61, actually a little bit more than 61 cents, so we'll make it 62%, 62 cents.
Okay.
If I'm correct, I wish if I messed this up, do you guys?
Make the amendment.
So just to speed up, if it's okay, so, so on these, we can go back and do and confirm the math. So, but on these, so could the board entertain approving, so approving the budgets based on the recommendation where the 2% increase are for the applicable board members?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that okay? So then we'll go back and do the math based on that, rather than kind of what's true now?
This is going to be, every time we take a vote, I totally agree with this, because every time.
So you questioned my math?
Yeah.
Yours specifically, perhaps. But I think that we don't want to get, we want to be done with the budget, right? Meaning, we don't want to come back and have to do, correct, but we don't want to have to vote a bunch of stuff because the numbers weren't correct. So I think that doing it the way the town administrator has proposed is more than appropriate. And I know that you and Mrs. Vining, when you actually are not at a meeting and trying to do everything real-time, will be able to do that math accurately. We do want to see the numbers.
Oh, oh, God, yeah, they'll be done tomorrow, but it just.
So for the sake of voting tonight, do we have a total number?
Can you repeat the wording? Like, can you repeat that?
So, yeah, approve, so approve the budget as long as there's no other question or issue or comment. Approve, so approve the recommendations as presented.
With the 2% salary stipend increase?
Yes.
Okay.
And actually, I do think the town, the count, yeah, yeah, no, if, yeah, that could be the motion, and then we'll go back, we'll do our diligence and get the updated information back to the Board of Selectmen and to the public.
Okay.
That's fine, I do think my math is correct, but that's fine.
You stand by that? Okay.
So I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we recommend for account 175, Planning Board, the town administrator's recommended request with a 2% stipend increase where appropriate, or where applicable.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Was that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, no, that definitely works.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll call for a vote, Selectman Hull?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campa Chico is an aye. The next agenda item or budget item is the account number 176, Board of Appeals, zoning Board of Appeals, and we've got another memo from Kerry Easterday. Please be advised on January 26, 2022, the zoning Board of Appeals voted unanimously to approve the fiscal year 2023 budget as presented, see attached. I did note that there was no increase in the stipend. I think we ought to give them that 2% like we give all the other boards.
Yeah, we have to, yeah.
We don't have to, but.
Well, you can't pick and choose.
But we did pick, because we're not giving it to us, so we did pick.
Correct, yeah, but that's what, we should not give it to us.
So I didn't do the math on this, so we can have this, is there any questions for Mrs. Easterday?
I don't, this is pretty straightforward.
This is pretty straightforward. I did the original presentation to them during their meeting. I will note that I did have a 2.5 increase in there for them, and they voted to reduce it and level fund it.
Are they going to be okay with the 2%?
I'm sure they will be.
So we'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we recommend for account 176, Board of Appeals, the town administrator's recommendation plus 2% for stipends where applicable.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote, Selectman Hull?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campa Chico is an aye. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
The next budget item is account number 210, Police Department.
Good evening.
Good evening. Select, so Mike, if you're going to be doing the Yet That Done tonight, if you're going to be at town hall at 2:00 in the morning, let the police department know that you're going to be over there so we know that you're going to be there.
So thank you, chief, but just to be clear, you're not getting an extra 2%.
Okay, Police Department, budget-wise, if you look at the top line, the personnel, we basically did the percentage, whatever the union got, because they signed a new contract. So basically, the numbers there are due to the contract that they received. On the bottom line, there were a couple lines that we, we kind of changed a little bit, not much, but just a little. I just want to go over one line so you're aware of it, where on the top one, personnel, where the educational incentive, it says chief, that should be chief slash lieutenant, okay? That's lieutenant, that's lieutenant, that figure there is for lieutenant, too. So, so you're aware of that, okay?
Thank you.
You.
Yep. Bottom line, some of the stuff that we went up was, I mean, the town administrator, I sat with him, he can explain some of the things that we did, like the gasoline line, we kind of looked at that. We looked at, what else is the other one here? Professional and tech, we looked at that one, so, if any questions on it, we can.
That was an increase of, your recommendation is an increase of 3,000, but I believe the town administrators is, is a reduction of 3,000.
So, yeah, I propose to leave that level funded.
Yes. What's your position on level funding that account?
We should be okay with that, yeah. I mean, like, professional tech, there's a lot of things we take out of there that we use. Basically, we use it for officers attending training. They're going to do a lot more training coming up. I mean, they're doing it now. The academy, if you send someone to the academy, it's like, I believe it's like $3,900 now to send someone to a police academy. So you're looking at the numbers, they go up, and there's a couple of things that we take, and there's so many of them, you know, that we do use that line for. But that figure there, we should be okay.
Dr. Z?
So for 51.51 tuition allowance, I saw that it looks like, I could be wrong, it hasn't been used this year, so why the $3,000 increase?
Well.
Are you anticipating, like, did someone express interest?
Yes, we might have a couple of people that might want to attend, take some college credit, so, looking into that. So that's why that number was put up. We do have somebody now that's attending, taking.
That's why I asked, too, I thought there was someone that was.
He's furthering his degree.
Okay, so, so actually, we do anticipate this fiscal year to have some expenditures from 51.51? Okay, thank you.
And my other question is, the Vacation Sick Buy Back, there's a request of $45,200, that's line 5155, but there's a recommendation from a town administrator that'd be $37,754.4.
Yes, and that's, that is backed up by, so, so I don't want to speak for the chief, but, so like, actually, like, initially, the, I think the department wanted, oh, you know, there was, there were a few potentials there. So, and now that is based on one real number.
And that number's fine, that is, that's 37, yeah, 37, whatever, I can't see that far.
And you're, and that's fine with you and your plans for the department?
Yep, that's, that's fine, yep, no problem, that's good.
Selectman Hull?
I'm looking at gasoline and diesel fuel. I'm looking at expenditures as of January 1, when gas was about 3.49 a gallon, and it is soon going to be 5. Are you going to?
We'd probably go over that if, the way the gas prices are, yeah. I got to say, we will. So I, I believe we.
Yes.
Put that, is that, I know town administrator, we talked about that, and.
Yes.
We put that up, 2 grand, 2,000, was it?
Yeah, we added an additional $2,000 in '23.
Is that?
Proposed in '23.
Now, when you look at your budget over basically, when you were figuring your gas price, what number did you use? Four, five dollars a gallon?
So.
Obviously, you're going to take how much per month.
Yep.
Per, times four.
Yep, so what we did, how we, so we looked at the, the fact that the, that the $25,000 now for, for seven months of the fiscal year, took us, took us to 55%. Took us to 55% of the budget spent, so which is actually just where we, based on seven months, is actually like a little less than where we should be trending out, because six months is 50%. So, so what we did, so, so based on the fact that we're meeting, so at the end of January, we were actually meeting our needs, so like, we added a buffer, so like, we actually, like, in, like, in more simple math, we, well, I proposed to add a $2,000 buffer. As a buffer, it's really not backed up by any, our scientific number, because we don't really know what the market is going to do. So, but also with the, with the option that the department also, based on where things are, because we're trying to project out actually 18 months in this, and a, and a market that's unpredictable, the department will also have the ability, if needed, to move between lines in the expense budget, if, like, if there's a, if there's a greater issue in FY '23 as well.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I just wanted to comment that I support the town administrator's higher number. I look back at FY 2019, when $29,000 was expended, and I think we probably actually have, I could be wrong, Lieutenant Cronin, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we have like a truck now, we have probably more SUVs than we had back then, so I'm going to go with the town administrator's recommendation. Just to be safe.
And you're right, these cars go 24/7 sometimes, they don't even stop, you know, and then.
They're big cars.
They're parked there, but, you know, and who knows, I mean, is $2,000 going to help us out? Who knows, we all know, no, we don't know what gas is going to be, could go down to hopefully 2 bucks again.
That'd be a good problem to have.
Probably not, no. But, but, but it's, look at the way it's going now, you can't predict it, there's just no way you don't know what's going to happen.
I just want us to be safe, the reserve fund only has so much money, we don't want to be in that position.
Yeah.
And this can be adjusted next year according to, you know, whatever the market value is at that time.
Sure.
And it may come out of other funds that they're not using.
Exactly.
Any other questions on the?
I don't have any on this, Mr. Chairman.
If not, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we recommend for account 210, the amount of $1,900,920.91.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote, Selectman Hull?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campa Chico is an aye. Next account is account number 215, Communications Department.
All right, communications is basically, it's, we level funded it again. They don't have a contract right now, it's been two years now that they've been without a contract. I did talk to a dispatcher today, asked them how we're making out with that, what's going on, and his answer was that they're just waiting to hear from the union that they wanna go to, they have to receive a letter. They have not received that yet, so basically, we just level funded that.
Did they have that election, though? Okay.
They did, yeah.
Thank you.
They did. So they're just waiting on a letter, they, from this new, whoever they're gonna go with, the union. So that's, that's that right now with the communications.
Thank you.
Any questions from the board? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the Board of Selectmen recommend account number 215, Communications Department, budgetary, funding of $394,015.45.
I'm gonna second that.
Any discussion?
I do. For 5301, I think I had asked you this last year, I apologize as to what the proper answer was. Why doesn't the Police Department consolidate 5301 under the data processing or network administration?
You're talking about the IMC?
Yeah.
That's a separate, that we get billed on, on the IMC. That's, we pay that every year. Lieutenant, if you wanna comment on it?
I think the original theory as to why we moved to this line was because it encompasses three different departments, it's communications, police, and fire. So it's paid out of a centralized line and that budget.
Is that better than having it? The only reason I even ask is because we had started, I think, last year for things that like, and I said to this, to the town administrator, for the town website, that should be in network administration. Everybody uses that, every department. But I'm not proposing to change it, I was just more wondering why.
Yeah, I would say on that, I think the only difference there is that it's not a townwide used system. It's really specific.
Public safety.
For public safety.
Okay. I accept that.
Any further discussion?
I don't have any.
If not, I'll call for a vote. We already made the motion, right?
Mm-hmm.
Selectman Howe?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campuchico as an aye. The next budget item is the Harbor Master 295.
Okay. So I'm gonna have Harbor Master Marino come up. He did this budget. I'll stay up here with you. But he did this budget, so he can go over if there's any questions. I know he sat with the town administrator, so if there's anything you need to know.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. What'd you like to know?
Well, I know that, and I keep on losing the letter, but there's, you requested an increase. If somebody could read that, if somebody wants to read that. Explain to us what the increase is for.
I have the letter here. The first line item was Harbor Master's stipend of 2%. That had fallen away from the day that, you know, from the year we were given it, it didn't make it back in. For about the last two or three years, it just fell off. So what I've done is adjusted that number to bring us back up with that 2% that we did earn, and then added the upcoming 2% to that line item. Does that make sense?
Yes, just that we didn't do that for other...
They did the same for the assistant Harbor Masters as well.
I don't think we did that for any boards, I don't think we went back retroactive, I think we just gave them all the 2%.
2% going forward.
Yeah, but we had it. We were already given it. And it just didn't make it into the budget.
I don't see that, because I see fiscal year expenditure, stipends, 1,000 for the Harbor Master, 21 is 1,000, 22...
So I'm saying, it didn't make it onto those when we did get it.
How did you, how'd you get of the...
Started out at 1,500.
What's that, please?
We started out at 1,000 for the Harbor Master and 500 for the assistants. And then the following year, we were given the 2%. So it should've been 1,020 and 510?
I think what, what you're asking is why wouldn't that be on the, it should be on the spreadsheet?
Right, right.
Like, from the past year, if that was really there.
So what has actually been funded and appropriated, so has been the $1,000. I can't really, and I wasn't really here, so I can't speak to why the 2% never made it in. So, but I can tell you, what has been appropriated was, for the last prior two fiscal years, was the $1,000 with no, with no, with no 2% included.
That's my understanding.
But if, may I?
Sure.
If what Harbor Master Marino is saying is true, then I think that that would have been incorrect, because when we were doing, when we were saying no 2% for like, the committees and boards, I don't think that was supposed to apply to, like, person, actual personnel. I would feel more comfortable if we look, if we like, had someone look at this, because I don't have that information or last year's spreadsheet, I have it at home, I don't have it right here with me right now, obviously.
So, yeah, so, so this is all, so this, for the two prior years, everything was level funded. I haven't, I haven't found anything of, of a 2% increase being applied anywhere.
Yeah. I'm not disagreeing.
Yeah.
Like, it's not here, like, we all see that. What I'm saying is, if it really happened, then that really was an error.
How would it have happened, though? I mean...
I don't know, I don't...
I mean, we didn't recommend an increase, FinCom didn't recommend an increase. This would've went before the residents, so how could you...
No, no, what I'm saying, I'm not disagreeing that that was voted and it wasn't in there. What I'm saying is, that was supposed to apply to boards, committees, and commissions, not to personnel. I'm not disputing that it happened, what I'm saying is it shouldn't have happened, because they are not a board, committee, or commission, they are like actual personnel. That's all I'm saying, sorry.
If you go back to the stipend checks to us, it's probably not that many years, it might only be about four years' worth of stipend checks. You'll see that the first one was 1,000, the next one was 1020, and then the last two were 1,000 even. And the 500, 510, and back to 500 even.
Yeah, I don't see that reflected here.
No, no, I understand that. Would the town accountant, in her records, have that information?
They should, yeah.
So, yeah, but the only information we've been able to find is that the, so like, in going back in our spreadsheets, and through what has been appropriated is only the $1,000, it's with no increase.
Understood. But to Mr. Marino's point, there, there is a departmental request.
Yes.
And then there is this line, actual expenditures. So we're not seeing here what, I think this is what you're getting at, we're not seeing what was requested, we're only seeing what was approved. So we wouldn't see this on this spreadsheet, that's why we need to
Yeah.
go back to last year's master budget, I know it's a little bit of work, it's not that much, though, and just see what the actual departmental request was, and that should clear it up.
Selectman Howe?
Being a newbie, why is the assistant paid more than the Harbor Master?
But it's more than one assistant.
There are three.
More than one?
Yes.
Is there three, you make?
Three.
There's three.
Three?
We have two currently, we have the open space, we have the third, which we're carrying.
We've had three in the past, though.
Yes.
Thank you.
I will entertain a motion to table this.
We have someone from the audience.
I just like to say, we've been giving other stipend employees that a 2% raise in the last few years, other than Mr. Marino. You know, if you're gonna give him 2%, you should look at all the other stipend employees, too. I know, you know, the planning board, I know we're a board or a committee, but we put in a lot of hours, too, and we have not received anything in the last few years. And I wanna thank you for recognizing us this year. But, you know, don't cry over spilled milk.
Cry over spilled milk? Mrs. Gula?
Dr. Z is correct, it was the finance committee who, at a meeting, after all the budgets had been approved by the appropriate boards, that said, "We are going to remove all stipends, the 2%, I think it was 2 and a half, 2 or 2 and a half percent, from all boards, committees, commissions." It was not departments in the town, it was not department heads.
Correct.
So if through inadvertence, Mr. Marino's department didn't get it, that was not what it was. It was, it was the finance committee that took that action.
No, I'm familiar with that. All, a lot of the boards have asked for that 2%. The, the finance committee did not recommend it, and the Board of Selectmen, if I remember correctly, also went along with the finance committee's recommendation.
Right.
And that's what went before the residents.
Right.
So I understand that there's been requests for it, but what has actually been approved was not the 2% for those, is my understanding, anyway. I don't mind tabling this and getting more information.
But what I'm saying is, the interpretation of that finance committee, I'll call it a ruling, decision, whatever you wanna call it, and the subsequent action taken by the Board of Selectmen, did not involve town departments. He's got a department
Correct.
with employees. They, whatever had been proposed for them at that time, they should've gotten.
Correct.
Okay? Because all of us, boards, committees, commissions, did not get it.
Correct.
So it's the interpretation of what the FinCom did that, that is what he's basing this on. You're right, he's right.
May I piggyback off that?
Sure.
And the reason I know that we're right, and I always know when I'm wrong, okay, so I wanna preface this by saying that, the reason I know we're right is because, just like we just had a discussion about if we do it for one, we do it for all, he's the only gentleman standing here who didn't get it. So that tells me it was a mistake with like, the actual payroll part, or the decision that got made, he got swept up with the boards, committees, and commissions.
Incorrect interpretation of what the finance committee did.
Boom. Mic drop.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to table account number 295 Harbor Master, so that we can get a definite ruling, I'm not sure
Like a clarification, yeah.
or through the town administrator, as to what happened and officially, how, a recommendation, how we should resolve this.
I'll second that. Any further discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote. Selectman Howe?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campuchico as an aye. So we're gonna take this up again. We're gonna do some further research.
I encourage you to look at the payroll checks that were issued to us, because we haven't been getting them very long, it's only been about...
If that will prove everything, really.
That's, that's your point to go to, to get your answer.
Right.
Don't waste your time anywhere else, because you know it's not on there.
Well, I'm not gonna waste my time, it's gonna be Mr. Mullins.
Never waste time, Mr. Mullins.
We wanna make sure we're doing the correct thing, and the accurate thing, so...
The next item that's an increase is equipment repairs and maintenance. I wanna have the bottom of the boat, the town boat stripped, and resealed, and repainted. The reason being is when you put bottom paint on a boat, it builds up, it's very, very thick, it gets chunky, it needs to be done. It's soda blasted, not sand blasted, preserves the fiberglass, it's only the underside that sits in the water, and it should be done on every boat, 10, 12 years.
And it's been 14 years.
Been 14 years, and it's time. So, you know, we won't have to paint the boat probably for another three or four years. So I'd like to budget for that, knowing that, you know, money is tight. No year is ever a good year to budget for, you know, certain expenditures, but, you know, we have to do it.
Maintenance is very important.
It's an asset that the town, yeah, it's an asset that the town owns, and, you know, it's my job to make sure that that asset is kept readily available at all times. The fourth increase is a professional and technical. I worked with the chief and the town administrator, we came up with a dollar amount of $1,000. What we'd like to do is have the assistants and myself work with either the environmental police, or with somebody designated through the Dyton Police Department, and give us some education at an ongoing basis of law enforcement tactics, law enforcement training. You know, there's a lot of things in the news that go on between the police and the communities today. We're not involved in that as far as they are, and we really need to be.
Absolutely. I'm shocked to hear this.
Why are you shocked?
To me, that's a no-brainer. Times have changed.
Yes.
You read the news every day. Law enforcement is under the gun, and you enforce laws. And many times, you're enforcing laws with people who are intoxicated.
Absolutely.
And can get dangerous.
Most of the time.
Thanks, so we'll address this
Yes.
budget.
Next meeting?
Maybe the next meeting, if we have that information, the next meeting.
Would it be possible, and Chief, I don't mean to put you on the spot, would you come back with some recommendations of suggested trainings that might help?
We have sat with Harbor Master Marino, me, Lieutenant Cronin. We've talked about certain things that we might wanna do. I know that, I'm not sure what's gonna come down the pike with post on Harbor Masters, that's in the works now, too, I don't know how long that's gonna take, or what they're gonna do. So there's a lot of things that are gonna have to change, probably, coming up.
Do you have some specific trainings that you would like to see the, or recommend to the Harbor Master, that his people attend?
I wanna, Lieutenant Cronin, answer that, if you don't mind.
So we do have a couple of communications out with Mass Environmental. The one thing we're really looking for is de-escalation techniques and tactics. Unfortunately, right now, they're not offering that just yet. With post, with reform, things are literally changing every day.
Okay.
So as soon as we get clarification on that, and where we can actually get that training from, until that time, we're, pardon the pun, we don't have an outlet right now for Harbor Masters, because everything kind of is in limbo. So we initiated this back in September, October, maybe? And we heard back in January, saying that they're, you know, aware of the need for it, but they just don't have a structure yet.
Selectman Howe?
Have you been in contact with Homeland Security?
I believe it's direct, Homeland Security will direct Mass Environmental, as far as guidance goes, that's my understanding. But directly, to answer your question, no.
And I know he, Harbor Master, he wants that. Talked to me about it, it's come to me, it's to Lieutenant. So, you know, like Lieutenant said, we're gonna, you know, look into this and see what we can do.
Selectman Howe?
Have you had any incidents involving drug interdiction?
Involving what?
You've walked into situations where either voters were carrying large amounts of drugs, or were involved in intercepting a drug transaction?
Yes.
So I'm not gonna micromanage the Harbor Master or the Police Department, as to what training you need. I'm impressed that you're asking for the training, which is very important, so...
I was just looking for some numbers, so, you know, training numbers, to identify. You know, obviously, you're gonna give us a bottom line, but it's nice to see, for what?
We see everything on the water that they see on the road. Some are really bad, some are not so bad.
No, thank you.
Some are really good. Many, many are really good. But it only takes one.
Unfortunately, we have a wonderful town, but times are changing, and it only takes one incident.
Yes, they are.
Thank you.
And I wanna thank you again, that you allowed myself and Mrs. Gula, you gave us a little ride on the water, so we can see exactly what you did, so...
I'm jealous. Yes, we do, immediately.
Just let us know.
Summertime. Nice, nice, but, yeah. But thank you again.
You're welcome. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
So the next account that we're gonna review is 294 Forestry?
294?
294, and this is level funding.
From water to land. Just kidding.
Any questions about this budget?
I don't have any, Mr. Chairman.
No, I don't either.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we recommend... Mr. Chairman, I motion that we recommend account 294 in the amount of $263.82.
Second?
Any discussion?
Yes, did we ever find anyone to fill the superintendent of insect pest control job? Wasn't that a vacancy forever?
Let the, uh, yeah.
I might be wrong.
Tree watering.
Good evening.
Evening.
Wasn't there a vacancy for, maybe I'm not remembering it correctly?
I don't believe anyone applied, was that your question? No, no one's applied.
Is it still vacant?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll, I'll still continue.
Doing this.
Answer any inquiries on it. Hopefully they will be done.
Correct.
Mr. Ferry, that position is a licensed position, right? You have to be li, you don't have to be licensed?
No, you just solve the problems. When somebody calls the towns, the town's going to provide someone to receive the call and channel it in the right direction, that's all it's for.
Oh, okay. So they don't do the actual spraying?
No, no.
Okay, so get back to the, the budget, uh, account number 422 highway construction and maintenance.
Mm-hmm. Do they have a vote on? No, we do need the vote.
They didn't vote?
I said, I said, I think I asked them a question.
On the, uh, forestry?
Yeah.
I thought we did. So, uh, I'll call for a vote, there's no further discussion on the forestry, uh, Selectman Hull.
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campuchico is an aye. Account number 422 highway construction and maintenance. Does the board have any questions for Mr. Ferry?
Nope. I don't have any, Mr. Chairman.
No.
Yeah, so that, so that the public knows, this is less than, uh, level funding.
Correct. Hence the no questions part.
Right, it's a reduction of over seventeen thousand dollars. So I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we recommend for account 422, 422, the amount of seven hundred sixty, seven thousand six hundred eighty-eight dollars and fifty-one cents.
Second?
What was that, uh?
I, I, the figure I gave was from the town administrator recommendations.
Seven sixty-seven, correct?
Yep, six eighty-eight and fifty, fifty-one cents.
Second?
Any discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote, Selectman Hull.
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campuchico is an aye. It was easy peasy.
It was a decrease.
The next, uh, account is 423 snow and ice removal.
Mm-hmm.
This is also, uh, level funded, funded. Obviously, we don't know how much it's going to cost for snow and ice, and we're allowed to, we're going to appropriate fifty thousand? Nope, are we? Yes.
Yes.
Total fifty thousand.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the board of selectmen recommend that account 423 snow and ice control be funded at fifty thousand dollars.
Second?
We're second. Any discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote, Selectman Hull.
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campuchico is an aye. The next, uh, account is 429 Dayton Berkeley Bridge.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and this is also, uh, level funded, funded, yep. Any questions about this?
I do actually have a question, but it's just because I, I don't recall, um, if it was ever fixed. Did the lights that were out, I know there were like one or two lights out on the bridge, this was also a long time ago, was that ever fixed?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. I was going to support this anyway, just so you know, even if the lights were still out.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the board of selectmen recommend account number 429, the Dayton Berkeley Bridge, with a sum of one thousand five hundred dollars.
Second?
Any discussion? Now I'll call for a vote, Selectman Hull.
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campuchico is an aye. The next account, uh, on the budgets is 432 street clean and stormwater. This is, uh, less than level funded, it's a reduction of seventy thousand three hundred twenty-five dollars and forty-six cents.
Mm-hmm.
Any questions for the superintendent?
Nope, just to thank you.
I'll entertain a motion.
Actually, I do.
Yep, Selectman Hull.
Um, stormwater, do they collect fees? Impact fees, permitting fees, at this time, none of that?
Yes, there are storm, stormwater permit fees that are imposed. There are other fees related to stormwater that we have not gotten into, but yes, permit fees, we do.
Now, when you say, um, when you say that we haven't gotten into it, is that something that's part of the discussion about current impact fees, or is that something the board is, selectmen has never taken?
No, no, some communities have fees that are set up through stormwater programs, and they get money from developers that goes into an account that goes back into stormwater. We have not gotten into that, okay? So a developer coming in, because the decision was made not to do it, through the board of health.
Oh, okay. Well, I wasn't sure which.
All right, so, um, we collect permit fees. I told you about the five thousand that's in pilot agreements, all right? Um, that's basically money that comes into the town's general fund. It's not earmarked for stormwater per se. Some communities actually fund part of their stormwater budgets through these other kind of fees that they set up. Uh, again, these are cities that have, and communities that have huge expenses for stormwater. We're probably one of the lowest in the state when you look at a stormwater program compared to others. So, and that's why I've said, down the road, we never know where this is going to go. But for right now, that's how we operate.
But doesn't the board, uh, the stormwater bylaw allow you to assess fees, whatever costs the town to inspect, whatever, engineering and all that, doesn't it?
The permit fee is.
Permit fee, additional fees. Doesn't the bylaw have something that says you can impose fees? I'm not, if the board of health voted against it, that's one thing, but doesn't the bylaw say?
There are different kinds of fees that, yes, there are, those fees that are mentioned in that bylaw.
Yeah.
Those on permit fees, they're not the five thousand base and maintenance things we talk about. The other fees that can be collected, it's in the bylaw, but again, the town has never decided to do it. It doesn't mean down the road, it's something to be looked at.
Mm-hmm.
I see this as a twofold plus for the town. One, it would generate income, but it also may convince some developers to go elsewhere because it's too expensive to build in a town that's trying to control its growth.
Except they would add them to the price of the houses they want to build.
Put it off on the consumer.
All right.
Yep.
When you think about a 40B, we can't impose anything on them. The permit fee, the, the, I mean, even the bylaw and all of that, as they said to us, we don't even have to talk to you, we'll listen to you, we'll let you make the presentation, but everything that we suggested, they didn't have to do, because everything got waived.
May I ask? Well, that's, it's not automatic that those fees, stormwater fees and everything be waived.
No.
The developer always request that. When I was on the ZBA, we did seven 40Bs, so I, I'm familiar with it. They request it, and the, and then the, the board will make a recommendation whether they should be waived or not, but they did set up 53G accounts, which town would hire an engineer at the expense of the developer, not at the expense of the town.
But those aren't stormwater fees.
I'm just saying that, but we had these 53G accounts.
Right, yes, the 53G they do.
So we saw to it that the town did not, did not cost the town anything.
Yes.
Uh, for the inspection and the ruling on the 40B. Obviously, a 40B with new houses, it costs the town money, schools and everything else, but, uh, we tried to recoup as much as we could.
But you're right, the fees that are mentioned in the bylaw are not what we collect per se, and there's a lot behind those, and what goes into it, the ability to do that, and what the responsibility of the town is when they do it.
Do you have a question? No.
Uh, more of a comment. Um, I'm hearing a lot of interesting things in regards to, uh, potential for exploring or setting up future stormwater fees. I hear you when you talk about the need, um, to have more than three hours from someone dedicated to stormwater, like a staff, I really do hear you, and that's not just lip service. And I think maybe this may warrant a discussion in the future, as to that may be a way, I know you can't earmark things, we've had that discussion before, and I totally understand that, but it may be a way of raising revenue at no cost to the taxpayer, to be able to have someone to do more than three hours a week for stormwater, so I did just want to say that.
So you're right, it's in the bylaw, which means we wouldn't have to amend the bylaw to be able to do it, but we would have to go through the process, which is not all spelled out in the bylaw, but yes, it's there.
Okay. Interesting.
It's something for us to consider, I think.
Absolutely. Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, Mr. Ferry.
So are we still on account 432?
Yeah, we haven't moved.
Okay. Uh, I will, if there's no further questions, I will entertain a motion, I don't believe we've done that. Have we? No. Entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the board of select, selectmen recommend account number 432 street cleaning and stormwater.
Is there a second?
The budget of one hundred fifty-nine thousand five hundred and twenty-nine dollars and ninety-seven cents.
Second?
Any discussion or any, any further discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote, Selectman Hull.
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campuchico is an aye. The next one is, uh, count number 491 cemetery. The, there is a request for level funding for the cemetery budget. Is that?
We, oh, so.
Oh, it's more.
If I may.
Yes.
So we, we leveled funded while we were investigating a new contract with our vendor.
Mm-hmm.
And you have yours up to date, Mike?
Yeah, my, no, my budget includes a recommendation, uh, for a $5,000 increase based on, um, based on going out to bid.
Is your, is the correct recommendation?
So I see that the previous budget was nineteen thousand.
Ah, sorry.
Nineteen thousand seven hundred dollars. The request was nineteen thousand seven hundred dollars, and, and the town administrator's requested additional five thousand dollars because we're going out to bid, if I'm correct, on the, uh, cutting the grass and maintaining the twenty-five cemeteries that the town does maintain.
I'll do it for free.
I'm just kidding.
It's twenty-five cemeteries.
Save this town some money. No, I support this. Um, but to clarify, the twenty-four seven hundred is the correct recommendation?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, so the new, new contract is nineteen thousand seven hundred and forty.
Okay, okay.
But the tot, total budget, yes, is the twenty-four thousand four hundred and forty.
Okay.
Thank you. Twenty-four thousand four hundred and forty?
Yes.
Oh, twenty-fourth.
I'll get back to it in a minute.
That's not what's here, though.
Well, he's doing the exact contract, like figured to the peven, he, I think rounded up to twenty thousand.
Yes.
And, and if I also may, it, that, I don't think you guys seen that contract approved yet.
No.
Because we just voted, the commission just voted on that yesterday, recommend that contract.
Okay.
But those are going to be the numbers moving forward.
Okay.
I know it went out to bid, but I haven't seen any, uh, results.
Right, hot off the press.
Uh, if there's no other ques, questions for Mr. Ferry, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we recommend account 491 in the amount of twenty-four thousand seven hundred dollars.
Is there a second?
Second?
Any discussion? If not, I'll.
What was that number again?
I was just using the, I think I have an older version, and I apologize, twenty-four thousand seven hundred? So it's using the rounded up figure?
TA's recommendation.
But the actual figure is twenty-seven, excuse me, twenty-four thousand four hundred and forty, is that correct?
That, that's a hard number, unless, unless Mike's figuring in the assigned work that that new thirty-five thousand, and I will.
So the, so we're leaving the, hold on a sec, we're leaving the equipment repairs and maintenance budget alone, so there's twenty-nine hundred there, add a three hundred thousand, where?
Three hundred thousand?
Three hundred dollars for the burial.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
For the burial agent.
Yep, so.
So it's the, uh, contract payable mow, and that's what's changed, right?
Yes.
Yes, and it's only, so I have a twenty thousand dollar number, like Tom has.
He gave the precise figure.
He gave the, correct.
Correct.
Precise figure.
I want to use the rounded up figure, if that's okay, just.
Same.
Just to be sure.
Equipment can break, you know, we're talking two hundred and sixty dollars.
Gets a scrape, and now we're spending. Just kidding.
Huh? You're so jin.
So that number is twenty-four thousand seven hundred dollars.
Okay.
Okay.
Just wanted to remind you that, uh, Senator, and I may have used this before, Senator Everett Dirksen said, a billion here, a billion there, after a while, it adds up to real money?
Yeah. That is true.
Uh, so the, the motion is the twenty-four thousand seven hundred dollars.
And second?
Yeah. Any, uh, discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote, Selectman Hull.
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campuchico is aye. So, uh, thank you, Superintendent.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks for being patient.
Fire chief, showtime. We have a few budgets to go over. Right now, the next budget is 2020, the fire department.
Good evening.
How we doing?
Good, how are you?
Good.
So I, I understand we're in negotiations, so this is not going to be necessarily the final figure.
Correct.
Right now, it's, it looks like it's, uh, if I'm correct, it's less than level funded. No, it's a little bit more.
It's a, it's a little bit more, there's a, just an increase basically in my subscription subscriptions.
We've got the contract, and that's going to obviously change.
Correct, correct. And I have, I have one anticipated retirement that's in there that I, I funded for.
Yep, I have seen that. Does the board have any questions for the, uh, fire chief?
Um, no, this is pretty, this is pretty straightforward, um, and then I think we just will expect, um, line 5106 to increase at some point when the contract is, um, negotiated.
And ratified, yep.
Yep, and ratified.
So I will, if there's no questions, I will entertain a motion.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I motion that the, uh, we recommend account 220 in the amount of seven hundred fifty-three thousand forty-eight dollars and ninety cents.
Second.
Any discussion? That's the town administrator's recommendation, right?
Yes.
Any discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote. Selectman Hull?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campuchico is an aye. The next budget item is the ambulance fund two thirty-one.
Ambulance fund was completely level funded. The note you'll see is just because last year we somehow inadvertently took out the software fees for the ambulance billing clerk. So I just want to make sure that that doesn't happen again this year.
Yes.
Understood.
So does anybody have any questions for the Fire Chief?
I, I don't have any. Actually, I do have one, and it's pretty much the same one that I had for the police chief, for fifty-four eighty-one gasoline and diesel, diesel fuel. And I guess I should have asked this under the previous budget as well. Confident that even with the rising and the fluctuation in gas prices that you'll have enough? You hope? No, I'm just kidding.
No, well, it's, it's a hard thing because it goes by the number of calls, the number, the trucks aren't running all the time. But yet, if we have a busy month and they're out on the road, I, I can't really predict how many runs is going to be and how often the trucks are going to be on the road. So am I comfortable? I think we'll be all right. But if gas goes, diesel goes above what it is now, then there may be an issue.
I just, my personal opinion is, I look at FY twenty, it was almost ten thousand was spent then, and gas is higher than it is, gas is higher now than it was then. So I guess I would ask my colleagues, do we as a board feel comfortable with the ten thousand? Or do we want to give like a little cushion, like the police chief did, of like a thousand or I think two thousand?
You can make that in your motion if you wish to increase the gasoline, diesel fuel.
Okay.
Now, Selectman Hull?
Is it appropriate at town meeting, or fall town meeting, if we needed to transfer from free cash to shore up a budget? Is that permissible?
Yes.
Yeah, we can do transfers, yes.
Or like, even, like, I'm not suggesting this, but special warrant articles, like things like that.
I would prefer to go that route.
Okay. And just take the, the TA recommendations? Okay.
Just that at the special town meeting, we won't actually have the figure. We'll know what five months of...
Yeah, that objection annualized out where we're at.
We'll have a better idea. Okay, I'm okay with that. Mr. Chairman, if you're entertaining motions?
Yes, I am.
I motion that we recommend for account two three one, the amount of seven hundred eighty-nine thousand five hundred eleven dollars and seventy-three cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
No, I just wanted to thank Selectman Hull. I think that's a good suggestion.
Thank you. Any discussion? Now, I'll call for a vote. Selectman Hull?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campuchico is an aye. Next, we talked about emergency preparedness.
Thank you.
Did we resolve that, two ninety-nine?
Yes.
We voted on it already?
Yes.
I didn't mark it down.
Yes.
And the last budget item for this, for tonight anyway, is six hundred sewer enterprise.
Thanks for waiting.
You know what they say about sewer, right?
Yeah.
Well, it's...
Is that the budget?
It's also self-sufficient.
Huh?
It's a budget that is self-sufficient.
Is this the same budget that we have, yes, it is, before us? Yeah, thank you.
I understand that you raise and spend your own money.
As you know, the sewer enterprise system is self-sufficient, and we don't use any money out of the general fund. So, like Mr. Piers said earlier, you know, in nineteen eighty-one, when they forced North Dayton to get sewer, the town had to take out a loan. And at that time, the town used to pay the sewer commissioners. But now, the enterprise system pays the sewer commissioners. So I don't think that you're going to mind us getting a two percent raise, seeing you giving it to everybody else, right?
No, I have no issue with that.
Thank you.
We just waited out of deference because you weren't here last week. So we, you know, we wouldn't act on it when someone's not here.
Great.
Believe you had a meeting last week.
And if you want to take out another loan, we'd be more than glad to extend the sewer.
You got a deal. No, I'm just saying.
Like I told Mr. Hull, you know, he came to our meeting, and, you know, I asked him, you know, next time you come, maybe you could bring twenty-two million.
In a duffel bag.
Well...
Yeah, cash, please.
I just saw that Congressman Oshinclaw gave a considerable, brought a considerable amount of money to the town of Somerset. So I'm hoping he comes our way with some, too.
At least down Pleasant Street would be good.
Environmental concerns, yeah.
Milk Street would be nice.
Well, no, that's...
Guys, good with my budget?
Selectman Hull?
Curiosity. The increase for the salary of the superintendent is one point nine nine percent.
Don't do Harold like that. Give him the, give him the point oh one.
So that's based on, so that's based on the working days and the hours annualized out. So like, it doesn't, so like, it's never going to equal out to two. So, so the increase is based on his hourly rate, not the salary. So the hourly rate is annualized.
Okay, okay, thank you. I accept that.
Thank you, Mike.
Anytime. That's what I'm here for, among other things.
Does the board have any other questions for Mr. Wood?
I don't have any.
If not, I will, unless you want to add something?
No, thank you.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we recommend account six hundred in the amount of, actually before, may I? I'm going to retract that. Sorry, Mrs. Brady. What is the difference? Why is your recommendation different than theirs? I just want to, before I make...
Yeah, I, I believe it was a stipend. You didn't...
Okay, so we should use theirs. Okay, that's all I needed to know.
Am I correct?
Yes, I believe it was a stipend, yeah, because we should have, yes.
Okay. Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
Sorry, Mrs. Brady. I motion that we recommend account six hundred in the amount of twenty-four million six hundred twenty-four thousand seven hundred thirty dollars and eighty-eight cents.
That's a combined budget. We have to do an equation at the end.
Yeah.
So it's actually four hundred eighty-six thousand two hundred fifty-eight seventy-seven.
Yep. Mm-hmm.
The twenty-four million, we, that number has to interact with our budget.
Okay, okay, I understand. I'm sorry. I'm, did you see me looking at it? I could not figure it out. And you were just looking at me like, how, you don't need to think, just say the right number. I apologize. I retract that. Again, I'm sorry, Mrs. Brady. I recommend that we, excuse me, I motion that we recommend account six hundred, the amount of four hundred eighty-six thousand two hundred fifty-eight dollars and seventy-seven cents.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote. Selectman Hull?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campuchico is an aye.
Oh, no, no. I was like, that's a big number.
So we have no acknowledgements. We do have a couple of letters. I'll read the first letter. I'm going to get knocked off. But I would like to address, this is from Carol Borogod. I would like to address comments made at your meeting on March night, twenty twenty-two, particularly from Selectman Hull making the comment that Mr. Long was the last assessor to be certified in the assessor's office. Just for a little background, Mr. Long was not certified to complete reevaluation, revaluations work. As far back and beyond in the annual report, ending in June thirtieth, nineteen eighty-seven, a company called Municipal Management Consultants, MMC, was hired to conduct the reevaluation and inspections. An article in the special town meeting, okay, town meeting of nineteen ninety, received a raise in appropriate appropriation in the amount of thirty thousand dollars to complete the assessment for fiscal year nineteen ninety-two through the same company. This went on for many years until Mr. Long became a part-time assessor, eventually full-time, and started taking an inspection work himself. Prior to that, MMC was doing all the inspections and re, and revaluation work. Once the inspections were being completed from in-house, there was no need to have MMC continue with this part of the work. This is when the assessors offered hired our current advisers to help with reassessments as a much lower cost. Mr. Long was still not and never has been certified to conduct the reevaluations work for the Department of Revenue. He did, however, receive his MAAO designation, Massachusetts Assessors Association Organization, still not a certification. Mr. Hull, I strongly suggest before you make comments about this office or any other office, for that matter, that you do your research and know the facts before making false statements. Thank you, Carol Borogod. Mrs. Borogod, did you want to say anything in addition to this letter?
No, I think I clearly explained. I think there's a misconception between what is certified. Our three board members right now are certified. Our three employees in the office are certified. We've all gone through the training, we've taken the class. What the certifying allows you to do is set, do the work to set the tax rate. Doesn't mean you're certified to do a revaluation. That is totally different. It's normally done within massive appraisal. And there's no town that I know of that does not either within their camera-assisted system, their software system, usually Patriot's Vision, will do the assessments. So what we're paying for, we are doing our work in-house. The only thing we're paying for is the stats to be done, to be submitted to the Department of Revenue. And that's why we're only eight thousand dollars. You go to the other towns that use these appraisals, Vision, Patriots, they're well over four to fifty thousand dollars a year. So I, I just want to clarify the difference, that we are all certified, all of us, even the girls. They're certified, they're not allowed to, to sign off on the tax rate, because you have to be a board member to sign off on the tax rate. But they have all the qualifications to get to the work, to get the work done to the point that we sign off. They can even submit. It doesn't have to be submitted through one of our names, as long as we are the ones signing off on the paperwork. And that's certification.
Thank you for your, thank you for your explanation. Do you have...
Yes. I, I want to thank you for clarifying that point. But I want to talk a little bit about perception. And that was part of what I had said in making my comments previous meeting. I had the opportunity of having Mr. Long come to my hu, my house to do what he had said at the time was an appraisal. Came in, asked questions, took pitches, measured out quality of land. So based on that experience, I assume that that was part of the appraisal process. But I will say this, based on the perception that Mr. Long left with me and many people in this town, is that he went out of his way to help find ways to reduce costs to the taxpayer. He visited taxpayers' homes dealing with tax issues on their time. He also went to each business in the town to review their personal property tax inventory list, to make sure they were accurate and to assure the town received every tax dollar owed to them. He cared deeply for this town and his work ethic, set an example and a stand-in that I question is still happening in the town. I am hoping, and in my comments also, we talk about perception, have to do what had happened in town meeting earlier this year, where the townspeople made, it has to do with perception. And I have questions in regards to the efficiency of that office, and I will continue.
Have we ever knocked up your desk?
Can you please ask them to come in?
Yeah, whoever's going to speak, I saw Mrs. Goulart, you're, okay, Mrs. Goulart, your hand was up to you. Would just come to the microphone so that the public at home can hear the comments. I just want to remind everybody that at ten o'clock, cable knocks off, so we just want to make sure that we're completing all the business tonight.
This isn't going to take long. I am insulted that a brand-new member of the Board of Selectmen is making statements about his personal experience when an assessor came to his home, and comparing that, I will say, personal, I'll call it an inspection, to what assessors do as far as valuations go. Quite frankly, if somebody said to me, would you come to my house and take a look at whatever, because I don't think my taxes are appropriate, my answer would be, I will go back to the board. I will not come to your house alone. One of the reasons you go outside for revow is so that nobody can say, hey, she took care of this one, and that one, she stuck it to. Even if I had the certification, because I would ask another auditor, excuse me, another assessor equally qualified to go with me. But what I'm saying to you is, I'm almost on the board for a year. I am insulted by the remarks you've made. You don't know what goes on in that office, and to say the perception is, well, if you haven't been in the office and don't know what takes place, your perception is probably out of whack. I'm still learning what goes on in that office. I'm still learning the stuff I have to learn to be an assessor. And I would certainly not point to anybody in that office as not performing what they should be performing. I'm learning from them. If you want to call a perception your personal opinion, you're entitled to that. But if you want to refer to a perception as a professional evaluation, it's inappropriate, because you don't have the background and you haven't spent the time there. Thank you.
Okay, so the next correspondence is from Tom Piers. Dear Board?
Oh, I think, did you want to read it?
You can read it.
I'm going to keep on losing. Do you have it in front of you?
I don't have it in front of me, no.
Something's wrong with your laptop.
Yeah. So, dear Board, it was with mixed emotions that I submit my resignation after twenty-one years of part-time service to the town of Dayton. Many people have told me you'll know when it's time to go, and that phrase has stuck with me over the years. In the last few weeks, I have come to realize that time has come. I have enjoyed both the good and the bad times while serving, and only hope I was able to leave a positive impact on those I had the pleasure to serve and with the residents I represented. The resignation is in effect on April thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, and include the Board of Health, Board of Health, or committee I currently serve on. Sincerely, Tom Piers. Did you want to?
I just wanted to say a couple of quick things. Tom had wanted to be here for it, that's why he asked that he be at the beginning of the agenda.
I think he might be on Zoom, actually.
Okay.
I don't see.
No, if it's, if it tells department, that's me downstairs.
Oh, I'm sorry. You and just...
Stay in.
Sorry.
So he wanted to be, he asked that he just be at the beginning of the meeting because he knew he couldn't stay.
I went over all the items that I thought he wanted to hear while he was here, and that wasn't one of them. That was...
So anyhow, so I just wanted to say that he's been invaluable to the board from when we separated four years ago to where we are now. I don't think we could do it without him. And honestly, we're going to miss his, like, about eight to ten hours a week that he's been giving us for clerical in order to get us through because we're so busy, especially during COVID and all that. We're hoping that Mrs. Katabia can step up. We're also looking that we get the job description posted, because obviously, we got to fill it. And Mr. Bernado is done on June thirtieth, so we kind of got to get that one rolling out, too, so we can fill that, because we don't want to have gaps. It's already hard enough to do the job with what we got, so we can't afford to be down a man. So, poor woman, so.
Thank you. So I've worked with Mr. Piers for many, many years. He was responsible, or brought it to the towns at a meeting, to give the senior discount to residents, which I thought was great at that time. But he's done a lot of things for this town, and I'm going to hate to see him leave. I understand what he's saying. But he's done a lot for this town, and a lot that the town residents don't fully know or understand that he has done. So he is a great loss to this town, and I'm, myself, president, will be missing Mr. Piers and all the work that he has done.
May I make a statement just very quickly? I probably won't be as eloquent as you. There are a few people, although many of them are in this room, who have given more to this town than Tom Piers. I like to think of him as, much like Assessor Goulart, really showed me the ropes, especially with the Board of Health, for the first few years before it was split, of course. He really has been a mentor to me. I feel like I'm talking to you. I'm sorry. I'm just speaking to Tom wherever you are. I really appreciate all that he's shown me and taught me. He knows this town so well. If you talk to Tom and thank him, he'll tell you, don't thank me, I'm just a, a poor country farmer. But, and he really, really has given a lot, and I am really appreciated. And whether he's here or not, the things that he's put into motion that have helped the town will continue to reverberate outward like ripples in the ocean. So I really appreciate that about him.
Yeah, I'll, I'll be continually need to reach out to him for guidance and assistance.
Hopefully, he answers your call.
I suspect he will.
You know, I, I heard him say that once he deals with the personal issues that he has to deal with, that he would come back, either in advisory role or take on more of a role with the, that subcommittee that...
Oh, the Solid Waste Committee, yep.
Solid Waste. I would strongly hope that that would happen.
Me, too. Me, too.
So entertain a motion to accept the resignation of Mr. Piers.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we accept the resignation of Board of Health Chairman Tom Piers, as presented this evening with thanks and sincere appreciation.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote. Selectman Hull?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campuchico is an aye. The next item is review, discuss, and act on the posting of the anticipated Board of Health vacancies. Everybody have that?
Mm-hmm.
Had an opportunity to review that. We're going to be posting two positions if it's voted on. One position will be filled with the start date of May first, twenty twenty-two. The second position will be filled with the start date of July first, twenty twenty-two. So we don't, we're down to two members now. We don't want to wait until July first. Quite frankly, we'll have only one member who's somewhat familiar with the Board of Health.
I'm sorry, was that allowed?
So we want somebody to start so that July first, hopefully, we're reappointing that person. But they'll have some experience when the, when Kevin Bernado leaves the Board of Health, and then we have to appoint somebody else. So, yes.
Just a point of clarification. His resignation is April thirtieth?
Yes.
And we're hoping to have an appointment May first?
Yes.
So will Mr. Piers be on the interview committee?
I suspect he would be, only because he's still going to be on the Board.
Our last meeting's April fourteenth, but, yeah, he's still going to be around, so I'm assuming he would. But I can't guarantee that.
Yeah.
I would hope either him or, like, certainly, I don't, not, I don't want to put anything on your plate. I know you are very busy. But I think it is important, since it's someone that you're going to be working closely with, that either you or Mrs. Gracie...
Or both, yep.
Correct, have some kind of input. You know what the job entails, you know what it takes, you've worked with the three members for... it takes. You've worked with the three members for, since you've been here, so I really think your feedback and input is really needed.
Now, will he, Mr. Piers be part, because the Board of Health will make a recommendation to us. You said your last meeting is the fourteenth.
Our last regular meeting, so we may have to have a special meeting in there, yeah.
Okay.
I just want to point out that this job description for the, when we, when Mrs. Katavia took her position, we've added in housing training into the, the job description, because as Mr. Agia, the building commissioner, pointed out, is that we don't have anybody with housing training in the town of Dyton except for him. So it's very important that we get somebody else. I don't have it, so.
Any other questions about this?
I don't.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'm, what is the motion? That we post?
That we post the.
That we tell people there are vacancies?
No, we're gonna post the position.
You shouldn't post the vacancy.
Okay.
One, one beginning on May first and the other one beginning July first.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I motion that we post the vacancies as presented this evening on, with the dates that you had just listed.
Second.
Second. Is there any further discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote, Selectman Hall?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campuchico is an aye. So thank you for your input.
And may I make one more remark about Mr. Piers? Because I think that this didn't get really emphasized, is the fact that he is not someone who shows up for a meeting once or twice a month. As Mr. Pilling said, he's literally in the office doing work, like, like an employee does. So really appreciate, really appreciative, also sets a good example.
Thank you. Next agenda item is approval of the minutes of the Board of Selectmen's regular meeting, minutes of March sixteenth, twenty-twenty-two.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
If there's no discussion, I'll call for a vote, Selectman Hall?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campuchico is an aye. Warrants dated March twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two. You have that information?
I do. Mr. Chairman, I motion that we approve the following warrants, all dated March twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two, thirty-eight A dash twenty-two in the amount of ninety-six thousand, five hundred sixteen dollars and forty cents, and thirty-eight B dash twenty-two in the amount of four hundred four thousand, eight hundred eleven dollars and fifteen cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
If there's no discussion, I'll call for a vote, Selectman Hall?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campuchico is an aye. Public input. Is there any?
Mr. Chairman, how are you, sir?
How are you, Mr. Higgins?
Good. I happened to be in Fall River tonight, but unfortunately, at the fourth meeting, I started off at the licensing board in Paul River and helped the Cornerstone Lodge get their license. They've been fighting for six months to get that. Then I participated in the Swansea Water District meeting, then I observed the Somerset Board of Slifing, and I really wanted to come to your meeting tonight. I didn't expect it to be so late, but you all are doing a great job. Are you having a meeting next week?
We may. I'm not sure when it's gonna happen. We may. It'll be posted if we do have a meeting.
Because I'm only here till April second, so I'd like to, I'd like to stop by while I'm in town, but if not, just want to commend Karen, Mike, and the board. They're doing a great job.
Karen, you hear that?
No open meeting law violations, very transparent, very receptive to any feedback I give everybody, and, like I said, you're doing a great job, and I hope you all stay healthy. And Dr. Z, you running unopposed, or you got an opponent?
Oh, no, not talking about that.
Let's not get into.
What I, what I did want to, what I did want to tell you is, the only reason that
I can't hear you.
The only reason you like us is because we still answer your calls, Patrick.
You were supposed to.
Yeah, I drive, I drive twelve hundred, uh, twelve hundred miles from here, and I don't want to take up any time, because you only got six minutes of internet left.
You remembered.
Yeah, you did say that you're, you're gonna attend our December eighth meeting, and you didn't show up.
Oh, yeah, well.
Uh, it's because I was stuck in Tuscaloosa. I didn't get back here till December the twelfth, but I've been back down since January tenth. I just got back here March tenth, and I'll be leaving on April second, so I hope to get over there before I make my final journey.
Sure. We look forward to that. Thank you, Mr. Higgins.
Nice seeing you, Patrick.
Is there any?
All right, guys.
Mrs. Goulart.
Thank you, Patrick.
I just wanted to echo what Dr. Z said. I enjoy all the time I've spent with Tom Piers as a selectman, as a member of the Board of Health, as the board, the Stormwater Committee, the Housing Plan. He wrote the first one with his, with his committee.
Housing Product.
He was always there. He was the one that would call me when we had the surprise inspections, you know, for various health violations all hours of the day and night. So I, I can only wish Tom the best. He's been great to work with, and he was always there, and we worked well together. He was there when I got elected in two thousand and seven, and he was chairman of the Board of Health. So worked with me on bridge projects and everything else. So we still want to see you around, Tom, but I understand, and we certainly want you to enjoy your, your sort of retirement. What I wanted to mention to the board is, the last meeting I came to, because I wasn't here last week, I had told you we had met at the Aggie School to talk about the MS four and the drones, the drones the school is looking into. I did get in touch with Newton Tetter at the EPA. He's the senior permit writer. I sent an email, and roughly twenty minutes, I had a response. That's unusual. The answer is, as long as the town of Dyton continues to have the excellent working relationship that we have with the Bristol County Agricultural High School, they do not have to get a separate MS four permit and report on themselves. The work that they're gonna have done on their own and have those basins vacuumed and all that done, they will report the cost, the cubic yards of material that's removed, and how it was disposed of to Mr. Ferry, and they will have an invoice to show all of that. We will include that in the town MS four.
Okay.
And as far as, if it ever comes to testing for nitrogen and phosphorus, as long as the town has a good working relationship with the county, with the high school, they will not require them to go on their own for an MS four. So the superintendent and everyone over there is elated, so we will be, they will continue to be part of our MS four as they have in the past.
Okay.
The drone thing, we'll let you know when we get an answer.
All right. Thank you.
Any more public input? If not, entertain a motion to go into executive sessions. We will not be returning back into public meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we enter into executive session under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A, Number Three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair, so declares.
I declare.
A, Town of Rehoboth versus Dyton-Rehoboth Regional School District; B, Dyton Highway Employees Local One Seven Zero One, AFSMI Council Ninety-three; Two, to conduct a strategy session in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, health agents; and seven, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant aid and requirements. Approval of the Board of Selectmen's Executive Session Meeting Minutes of March sixteenth, twenty-twenty-two.
Second.
Mr. Chairman, just want to state that the non-union personnel is under twenty-one A two, not twenty-one A three.
Is that correct?
Yeah, there should have been another under Massachusetts General Laws.
See, you were here for a reason. I, I accept Mr. Higgins amendment.
You gonna make that amendment?
Yeah, absolutely. He did.
Can you approve that amendment, Selectman Hall?
Yes.
Thank you. See, that was an open meeting law violation waiting to happen. Thank you.
I want to call for a vote, Selectman Hall?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campuchico is an aye. Everybody, good night?
Thank you, Patrick.
I just gotta use the bathroom.